We will take any nominations for Chair and Vice Chair.
Hey, Commissioner Goldstein to be Vice Chair. To be the next Chair.
Since you're sitting in the Chair.
I know.
I second that nomination.
Do we call for a vote?
Call for a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is.
It is, okay. So our Chair, Commissioner decide.
Do we have a party now?
Ken Goldstein is the Vice Chair.
Here we go.
Here's the toast.
We don't have to change seats.
We get to have a toast of water, which is more precious than most other liquids. This is your Padre at the moment. Here's to you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we will move on to the third item here, the agenda, an approval of the agenda.
I would like to make a, just a friendly amendment to the agenda and bring a portion of the Planning Commission communication to this part. I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge Tom Penelberry, who I asked to come to this meeting. He was not at the, his last meeting, official last meeting, because he wasn't feeling well. And I just asked him, I thought it would be a good time to, for him to come and, and for the Commissioners to make any comments at this point. I've also asked Tom, we can put him on the spot, he can also come to the podium as well.
Any parting words?
Parting shots?
Wisdom?
You know, I've been, I've been thinking about parting shots for the week. And they've run the gamut of, oh, eight years of sitting on, on that side of the bench. Stay sharp. You guys are, stay that way. Don't let people run over you. Thanks so much.
I'd like to just add, and Kevin, I know you, you on the record mentioned at our last meeting, but thank Tom for his service up here and just, I think, having come on when I did, you know, it was very beneficial to have Tom on the Planning Commission, learned kind of the ropes from him a little bit and got some wisdom and feedback, so I appreciate that and thank you for your time up here.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to add, Minnie Schneid came out the same time and it's been two years now, and we got to serve under two great chairs, both Bob and Tom, and we've learned so much from both of you. Different areas of focus and just some wonderful conversations with you after the meetings out on the street and learning about your history with the town and how much you really do love and care about this town and that passion you have for architectural excellence and design integrity. Thank you for sharing that with us and infusing us with that.
One of the things, having served on the Commission for a long time, is that we've, I've seen a lot of really different and interesting Commissioners come and go. And I think everyone brings their own special something to how we deliberate here, and I'm really going to miss what Tom has brought to us. The knowledge of architecture and also just good, good sense, I think is the most important thing that people need to bring with them. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I probably learned the most from any of the Commissioners I worked with was from Tom. I would like to say that, I'm, I'm sure Gina will agree with me on this, he normally was a calming voice when sometimes it was some out of control talk and stuff at, at some of the Commission meetings, but I, I certainly appreciate the fact that he was on the Commission, I certainly appreciated his friendship. And I hope to see you around town forever, so.
And I'd just like to mention, I haven't been on the Commission long, but really appreciate all the work that Tom gave us and, and I look to him as a fatherly figure. So Dad, thanks so much. And unfortunately, we're less one architect on the Commission now, so, but we'll try to get along.
That was the agenda as amended.
All right, great. So I guess we could go back to the agenda itself and look for an approval of the agenda.
I will move that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes of June 19th?
I have a fix.
Okay.
On line 131, where it says that I was unable to make the finding that the proposed residence is inconsistent with the existing neighborhood, I believe I was unable to make the finding that the proposed residence is consistent. Double negative. We can just take out the inconsistent. Change that to consistent.
Anybody see anything else?
I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've reached the point for audience comments, so at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning any item that is not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes your participation and input. When addressing the Commission, please begin by stating your name and address for the record and limit your comments to no more than four minutes in order to provide for an orderly and timely meeting. We have any, not seeing any rush to the podium here. Going once, twice, all right. Close, audience comments. So now we've reached a portion of the meeting for our public hearing items. The first item, Resolution 1409, denying conditional use permit 1401, CUP 1401.
We have Letizia Cardoso, Senior Planner, will give a brief report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As you recall, at the last meeting on June 19th, the Commission held a public hearing and directed staff to prepare a resolution denying CUP 1401, which is a request to construct a 4,400 square foot, single-family residence at 2235 Santa Anita. The Planning Commission raised some questions at that meeting regarding the existing parking cutout area along the front property, and staff can clarify that. The Commission asked whether covenant had been recorded to ensure that the parking would be maintained in the future, and staff confirmed that there, there is, that no covenant has been recorded and that the resolution approving the tentative map at the time did not include a requirement for such a covenant to be recorded. Also regarding a condition that a new curb and gutter be constructed, it is typical, it's a typical requirement for owners of vacant property when they develop their properties to actually provide public improvements along the frontage of their property, and that sometimes includes sidewalk or curb and gutter and sidewalk in Parkway when the property is developed, so that is kind of a typical condition. In this case, the, the curb and gutter that is being required would be extended to align with the existing frontage of the properties to the north and south. However, staff is further reviewing this issue with Department of Public Works and Fire Department because it affects both, both departments. The Commission also asked for confirmation that the property is not part of the Liliano tract, based on, as you may recall, public, during a public hearing, there was a claim that the property is included in that tract and, and if so, that specific conditions in the CCNRs would apply to this property regarding restrictions in the building height and in addressing view preservation. Staff has reviewed the tract map and for that, for the Liliana subdivision and confirmed that the subject property is not included in that tract, therefore it is not subject to those CCNRs that apply to the Liliano tract. Again, this is just for clarification purposes because those issues were brought up, they don't affect the decision regarding the CUP tonight. The property owner is here and before you take a vote, the property owner would like to address the Commission if, prior to your, your decision. So this is extent of my report, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, or if not, I can have the applicant come up.
Do you like to call the applicant?
Sure.
Okay. The applicant would like to.
Good evening, my name is Janet Chan, and I'm the owner of the property at 2235 North Santa Anita. I'm here tonight to ask you not to approve the resolution denying our proposed project. I know there's a lot of concerns from the Commission about the square footage of the home, but one of the reasons that we purchased this property was because the city already had approved the parcel map that allows for the development of up to 4,400, 400 square feet. We spent a lot of money purchasing that land, so every square footage is very important to us. One of your reasons is saying that our project is substantially larger than most homes in the area, but if 4,400 is considered substantially larger, I don't think the city should have approved the parcel map in the first place to allow that square footage. A comment was also made that the building covers a lot of the lot, but please keep in mind that this is a one-story home, so it will look like it covers a lot more lot than if it was a two-story home. I don't think our project will have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. In fact, the neighbor behind us really loved our design and so did many other neighbors. We can't change the fact that the property is naturally on a higher grade and is on a corner lot, but I'm confident after we build the new home, it will be a beautiful addition to the foothills. With that said, I am willing to work with my architect to make some changes that will eliminate some of the concerns you guys had in the last meeting. For example, one of the concerns was the building height of the overall building. I already discussed with the architect and I agree that we can make some changes on this floor, ceiling and plate height. We can also lower the roof pitch, we will, which will help with the overall appearance of the building and make it look less bulky. Also, an issue brought up was incompatibility in the neighborhood. We can also work with changing the style or adjusting some architectural details so that it will conform more with the surrounding homes. We'll make sure to include, include more landscaping so it can blend in with the more natural surroundings of the foothill. One more thing we can do on, that we're willing to do is also push the building setback up to five feet. Pushing the property back more will help with the appearance of the building. I think that farther setback along with the adjustments made to roof pitch and ceiling height will just, address most of the concerns the Commission had. So I asked that the board deny the Resolution 1409 so that my architect and I can work with this changes and resubmit to the Commission.
We have any questions, comments?
So two, two points, we asked your designer pretty specifically if we could work together and we didn't get much back at that meeting.
Yeah, and I apologize, I wasn't present at the previous meeting to finalize those decisions, because I had a lot of family over, it was my wedding week, but I did go over with him, so I told him that, let's work together, because, you know, we spent a lot of time and money to submit the application and we spent a lot of, you know, everybody's time, so I would rather, you know, work with him directly, one-on-one, to make, you know, detailed changes and resubmit than to, you know, go back to the first step.
Well, it was our hope that we could work a little more cooperatively. We were a little surprised actually by the reaction.
Yeah.
You did, you weren't here unless you watched the video. There was one person who did support the project, but at least half a dozen who didn't, possibly more. So in terms of it being something that the surrounding community is excited about, I don't think you're quite there yet. So if you want to work with that and think about the bulk and mass as it applies to the things that you've raised and some of the square feet, I might certainly be willing to look at it again, but I think you're going to have to compromise on multiple fronts to get some of that neighborhood on board, because they are, were pretty adamant, a couple of people, that it was just not a good fit for their neighborhood, so we'd love to be cooperative, but we're going to need some creativity.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go back to the.
Including, including the square footage.
Square footage.
Yeah, including.
But can I ask why that, you know, if it was allowed and, you know, approved on the parcel map that, why can't we?
I wasn't involved in that decision.
I think there's a misnomer there, like, you have a square footage that's allowed and I think it was like 4512 or something.
Forty-four.
Up to, but once you cross over 4,000 square feet for the house, there's other criteria that have to be met, which is the bulk size, mathing, those, those guidelines and criteria.
Yeah.
So you can say that you're entitled to a certain amount of square feet, but once you've moved past that, it's up for review as far as the size of it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what you're, you're in this, this space right in the middle there.
Yeah, and I understand, I also, I'm sorry. I also want to point out that, you know, because of the condition that if it's over 4,000 square feet, we have to go through the whole, the Planning Commission, that, you know, that extra square footage is important to us, because we can very well, you know, do a 3,900 square feet and bypass all this, but, you know, when we purchase a property, we, you know, we're expecting, you know, that we would need all this work and so that we were willing to go through all this and put in more, more time on it.
So let me ask, ask you another question. You talk about the project as if, is this a project, because we were told that, or informed that this is a spec home.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So when you say that you're expecting a certain square footage, it's not because for some basic reason, like, we need this to be a certain size, because you're not moving into the home per se.
Right, yeah, inside, but you know, it is, it is a spec home, so it is, you know, our, our risk, and it is my family's money that we're putting in to, you know, to develop this property for, as our investment. So when we purchase a home, we need to, you know, know that we have to at least be around this, you know, for our investment to, to be worthwhile.
You know, excuse me, I hate to interrupt her. So there's been a lot of people come before this Commission over the years, and I always like to tell them the same thing, no matter who's standing there, it's not our purpose to make sure you make the most money out of this house, okay? You can take it to 3999 and we'll never see you, okay? But you just lost whatever money you thought you were going to be, you might, we might bring whatever you have back, we still might deny it. Okay, so, but we're not up here to make you money.
Yeah.
You're, if you're going to invest in our neighborhood, you're going to invest basically in the neighborhood, we're not going to have some gigantic house that the rest of the neighborhood's not happy with.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, I respect that too, because, you know, I live in an area myself that has a lot of development going, going on, so I, I'm, you know, I look at that as a very important item, so that's why, when I talked to Philip, I said, you know what, let's just sit down, let's make the, the changes. If, you know, if lowering the roof pitch or, you know, the ceiling height will make it look, you know, and he's, he's the one that suggested we can push back the building too, and then I said, that's a good idea, we, we can, we can make the building look, you know, not as big from, from the street level.
I think, you know, there were quite a few issues about this house. I mean, one is just the basic square footage is, is much bigger than the neighborhood, and, and the fact that you could build a house up, there was a maximum put on the size of house that you could build on this lot, does not mean that you are guaranteed that many square feet.
Yeah.
It means that is the absolute maximum you could put, if it met all the conditions that you need to meet in order to build a house over 4,000 square feet. If you want to do this, rather than make this, I, I told your architect the same thing and I'm going to repeat it to you, rather than make this house so grandiose that it looks much bigger than it is, you should make every effort to make the house look smaller than it is. You know, take down those super high ceilings, make the house a lot shorter, and mass and bulk means not just the square footage, but how tall it is, and this house is way taller than the number of square feet it is, and so it looks like, even though it's not a two-story house, portions of it look like a two-story house. And if you want us to think about approving this house and you bring it back to us, you need to make this house way lower and make it look much smaller and indeed also reduce the square footage, if you think you're going to, if you really think you're going to get my vote to approve this structure.
Yeah, I think that's.
You need to do everything you can to make it look smaller, not everything you did to make it look bigger.
Okay.
And, and one of the problems with the, with the size, the footprint size, you know, you're stuck at 4,400 square feet, that's 4,400 square feet of a, of a house footprint, but in your situating it on the lower portion of the site, because it's basically a two-tier site, you're squeezing it into that lower portion, which is too close to property lines, so, how to give you that advice?
So, I mean, I think what you're hearing is, we welcome the opportunity for you to bring back your project, but with some of the guidance and recommendations given by the Commissioners here, that, you know, if, if, what we're hearing is willingness to sort of look at the height and pitch and such, and maybe even the style of the home related to that, but I think bulk and mass, there's, there will need to be some compromise or reduction in size and footprint, so if that doesn't happen, I think you'd be wasting more time, everyone's time, you know, so there's, if that's something you want to do and.
I think I'd be open to, you know, working on the square footage with him.
Okay, so.
If I, if I may, if the Commission wants to consider continuing the item, I would recommend that you ask the applicant, agree to waive any permit streamlining act deadlines that may apply, so that in terms of making a final decision, if you would be willing to extend the permit streamlining act deadlines, that that would, your continuance would need to be contingent on, on getting that waiver, which you can do, you know, here orally on the record.
Is that because of a time, time limit thing?
Yeah, there is a time limit on when you need to take action once an application is complete, and when I'm not sure how, how much time you'll need to kind of do this reworking, but I don't want the accommodation to the applicant to then, you know, put us in any default on timelines.
Do you want to set a date to return, or do you want to leave it until you've got it figured out uncertain?
Maybe we can get back to you, I just need to check with Philip to see how much time, but I, I don't think, you know, we're not looking at six months, I'd like to get this in as.
Okay, but you, you're not ready to schedule, so we just need the waiver.
So we need the waiver then?
Right, right.
And the, just so you know, the, the next, the next available meeting would be August 21st, that's your regular meeting, August 21st, so you can continue it to a date certain if you feel that's enough time.
I think August 21st is enough time.
It would, it would mean that we would need to have plans submitted to city staff by no later than August 7th.
Okay.
So just be aware of that, but continuing it to a date certain would, would allow you to continue the public hearing and perhaps not have to notify.
Why wouldn't we have to notify?
Because it's continuing.
Yeah, but the last, the people who were last time heard that we voted it down, I think it needs to be notified again, the neighborhood needs to know that we're going to look at a new design. People who are here heard us say no.
Yeah, that was kind of the understanding.
So I think it has, I mean, my sense is, we have to let people know again.
We, we can notify neighbors.
I think there should be a full disclosure, I think that there should be full notification, we need to let people know what's going on, because we're changing our minds from what we said last time.
That's, that's not a problem.
Okay, yeah.
So you would just make your motion to continue it to a date certain?
Do we need to ask about that the applicant is willing to waive this?
Yeah.
Streamlining.
Deadline.
Deadline?
Yes, all right.
All right, good. All right, so, we need a motion?
Do you want to take any other public comment? I don't know if there are.
I guess it wouldn't.
Yes, sir, I don't see it.
You can open it.
Turn it one up. Well, let's go ahead and thank you.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comment in regards to this first item here. Not seeing any rush to the podium, we will close, hold a comment, bring it back to the Commission. We will close, hold a comment, bring it back to the commission.
So, that we continue this to August twenty-first?
First. Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. See, August twenty-first? All right. Get to this here, sorry. Your second item. Uh, we're at the portion of the planning commission meeting to discussion item, uh, the draft general plan update review, be continuing?
Just to, I mean, introduce, this is, um, as you know, for the past several months, you have been, uh, reviewing the sections of the general plan, and before you today is review of chapter four, uh, community services, which includes, um, sections regarding law enforcement, recreation services, library services, community cultural, cultural and special events, transit, and, um, finally, public services. Uh, the document, uh, that you have today was recommended by the general plan steering committee, and, um, I should note that the overview of existing conditions for each of these sections have been reviewed by the respective department staff, because there's been some time since, um, those were, the overview was updated, and so we did make some, some, some changes that, um, we'd like you to review this evening. Um, and, um, each of the department, um, representatives are here also to respond if you have any questions about the, you know, the, the changes that were made. And, um, and as you know, uh, staff, as we go through each of the sections, will, will make any comments that we'd like to get input from you, um, that we've discovered that perhaps clarification of the language or just the meaning of the language. Um, with that, I think, uh, as we have in the past, we just start with page one and we, we keep going.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Do we not have a city council liaison with us today? Is that? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see you back there, okay. I didn't have, so are you going to be the new liaison with the?
I'm an alternate.
Okay, thanks.
All righty. So, chapter four, community services.
Community services.
Page one. Comments?
I think we do have, uh, police representative too. So, yeah, page one.
I have a question on page two.
Page two?
Okay.
So, um, and I know you, I'm not quite sure why, but I think we'll find out briefly why you highlighted objective C-one, but in summary of police services goals, number one, it's at a high level of public safety for its residents. That seems soft to me. Um, I don't know what's a preamble, but I would like to see a better descriptor than high level of public safety. Um, words that come to mind would be exceptional or extraordinary, uh, which is what I'd like to aspire to unless there are legal reasons not to.
Okay. Um, staff highlighted it because.
Well, that's, that's a number one, so that, I'd like to make the change to number one and then.
Oh, under summary.
Under summary, yeah.
Yeah.
What were your choices?
I said, instead of a high level of public safety, an exceptional level or an extraordinary level.
Yes, I would vote for exceptional over extraordinary.
Okay.
Which I think we have, actually.
Which is why I'd like it to continue to be so aspirational.
Yeah, I think it's exceptional.
Okay.
All right, that's good.
Had a comment on C, objective C-one?
Well, we had a comment because just, just that, this, there's a, the, the goal is, you know, what, what says an exceptional level of public safety for its residents, and objective C-one seems to pretty much repeat what that goal is.
Yeah.
And, um, while it needs to align, it, it should, um, be an objective to meet that goal, and, um, we, staff looked at the language and we thought perhaps, um, just saying, and again, this may not, may not jive exactly, but maintenance of, instead of what's, what's stated here, maintenance of current and future levels of police services? Maintenance of exceptional?
Well, I would say, if you're trying to be more directional about it, you would say something to the effect of resources and training to achieve an exceptional level, because that's really what you're looking for.
That's great.
Resources and training to achieve an exceptional level of public safety? That's what you're really defining in the subbullets.
That's great, thank you.
That's really good.
My only question with something like that is, if in the future, where now, we, let's say we have forty policemen.
Yes.
If they could do the same job with twenty policemen, are we, you know what I'm saying?
You can insert the word efficiently if you'd like. You could say resources and training.
I think it's very vague. It doesn't say how much the resources are. No, I mean.
I'm just asking, I'm just, you know.
I mean, it doesn't say maintain the resources we have now, it just says, you know, have enough resources to do it. I think it's the wording.
Okay, that's fine.
But if you wanted to say too efficiently, that would be fine as well, if you feel better about that.
No, no, I just, I think what you're saying is fine. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that, that in the future, hopefully, they come up with something where maybe we've got.
Yes.
Robotic dogs that take place of, you know. I'm, I'm just, you know what I'm saying. There could be some mechanical thing in the future, some technology, where we don't have to have S many offices.
Drones, Google Glass.
Guys, I'm sorry. We're bringing Robocop to some.
Okay.
Okay. Does that solve your problem?
That, that revised language for objective C-one does solve it.
Right.
Uh, we do have one other comment on C-one too, even though we didn't highlight it, but, um, C-one two reads, um, assess the impact of increases in population on response time, calls for service, and traffic through the design review process, and we'd like to change, because we don't have a design review process, we have a building review process, um, so law enforcement assets will not be degraded. So, I just think it's just a difference in the term, same intent, but just difference in the term.
Well, now that you bring that up, what are you driving at there? Is it just, like, studying streets and, and access and this and that? I mean, how, how does that, is that a building issue, I guess? Or what's the goal, what's the?
If you have an increase in population, then, you know, if we have more houses being built, um, more calls existing.
And I just thought of what you said. I think it should be through the development review process, not building review.
Yeah, like, why is it a building issue? That's what I'm trying to.
Because if you have, you know, if you build two hundred more houses, then you have more streets, and you have more calls, and you have more everything. So, that, I mean, it has, it has. It has to do with the issue of.
Meeting the demand or?
Yeah, the word I'm looking for is.
It's planning, right?
How much more we can build the city off.
It's a planning with a capital P.
It has to do with the cumulative impact of development, right? So, you know, you add one house, you add one house ten times, maybe not, you add one house three hundred times, now you have a cumulative impact. And somewhere along the way, you have to catch it and say, wait a minute, these two hundred and six houses we've added have really increased, increased the efficiency of our police force and able to take care of things because now there's more things happening and there's, we need more resources.
But what it does, in what the general plan looks at, is how much strength can we put on our resources, right? So, and that's, that's the resource, you know.
But we don't have a designer review process, we have a planning process with a capital P, right?
What I'm saying, through the development review process, it makes it a little more general, but.
Because when you look at the impacts of development, that's one of the impacts, the impact of community services.
Makes sense.
Be good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Page three, I'll wait till after.
Other office, sir, if there's anything we say that you don't feel is appropriate, please shout it out.
I was just going to say that, and she had it right, the commission, versus them.
It's televised, sorry, the meetings are televised.
I apologize. Captain Carlos Eslos, representing in the police department. You had it correct, that the issue regarding building, uh, in the master plan is important because if, for instance, if someone were to make a, a presentation that they wanted to build a high-density, uh, multi-level apartment or condo, uh, complex, that would potentially increase the population and the response for calls into the city, and ultimately would put an impact in police resources. So, that is correct. So, thank you.
Anything else we sign you up for that doesn't sound good, just come run down and tell us, yeah.
I will, sir.
Page three, we, staff does have a few, but I'll, should I wait until you have your comments?
I've got nothing, so go.
All right, uh, objective C-two, when you read the objective, um, it says addressing public safety measures for, measures for crime prevention and new developments. We, we feel that the objective does not match or does not align with the policies, when you read the policies. So, we are making a suggestion to call C, uh, to, to revise objective C-two as, um, crime prevention through public safety programs. It just simply, you know, when you read the policies below them.
It doesn't have to do with new development.
It's not just, just new developments.
Somehow it was just miss, yeah.
Say again what you recommend.
Crime prevention through public safety programs.
Okay.
And so, when you look at, um, C-two-one, C-two-two, C-two-three, um, with the exception of C-two-four. Uh, C-two-four, we feel also, it does, just does not belong under this objective, but we do find that it belongs, um, actually on page thirty-one, under objective C-thirty, so that's further along, if you want to look at page thirty-one, uh, page thirty-one. It belongs under objective C-thirty, the improvement of traffic safety.
Uh-huh.
Um, and I'll read that so for everyone to, educate citizens on traffic control to enlist voluntary compliance with, of traffic laws.
Oh, under transit?
Under transit, yeah.
So, that would be under objective C-thirty, the improvement of traffic safety?
Right.
Makes sense?
So, C-two-point-four moves?
Well, you know, now I realize, it, it could, because it could be a public safety program. Either way, we could keep it on here and keep it in both, you know.
Well, what, uh, what, read your revised objective C-two again.
C-two would be crime prevention through public safety programs.
This isn't really crime prevention.
Yeah, okay, then maybe I'm.
It is public safety.
It is public safety.
For sure. So, I think it would want to.
It makes more sense in the other. Okay, and you, you'll get renumbered to something else?
Yeah. You're okay with us moving it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then, on the last policy on page three, C-three-point-three, I'll read it, involves city staff members when necessary in solving problems that are outside the scope of law enforcement or code enforcement activity.
What does that mean?
I didn't, I didn't know what it meant either. And so, um, here's a suggestion. Work with other city departments when necessary to help resolve matters that fall outside the scope of law enforcement.
Well, that's.
Well, I, I think we were just trying to find what the meaning was of this.
What is the meaning? What are we trying to say?
I think what it means is if there are, for example, officers that are, are, perhaps dealing with an issue that's beyond their scope of general law enforcement, like it's activity that's occurring that has to do with zoning or.
Land.
Building and safety or land use, and they happen to be out, that they will, they will meet with city staff so that we can educate them and educate each other so that there isn't this, uh.
Sir, Captain Eslos again. What it basically works from the broken windows philosophy in law enforcement. What that means is, is our, as our officers are out on patrol, if they see something that could impact the quality of life in a neighborhood or the community, such as, say there's a vacant lot and somebody has, has dumped a couch there or a mattress, um, it's something that we would notify Public Works and let them know if there's a possibility of having someone go and pick that up. Um, if someone's dumping, illegal dumping, that's something that generally we would take enforcement action, but also we would work with the city to help clean that area up so it doesn't cause an additional problem with others seeing the problem there and, and dumping stuff as well. So, again, it's, it's stuff that ultimately is regarding quality of life issues in the community, identifying potential problems that, again, historically may not fit specifically under the police department's, uh, area of responsibility, but we share that information and work with the city to help resolve those issues.
So, maybe it needs to be involve other city departments when necessary to solve problems outside the scope of law enforcement.
Correct. Okay, I like that.
A question for you now, is this, this is a public document, right? So, who's going to be working on this? When they, would somebody pulls this up and they see this here, they go, okay, there's a guy next door who's.
Right.
Just added a chicken coop to the front of his house. Who's he going to call? Is he calling code enforcement?
He may call, his first reaction may call police, yes.
Exactly, so, I just.
Exactly, that is very similar, I mean, police.
And then, his, his analogy of somebody dumping a couch on an empty lot, if it's the empty lot next door to my house, I'm calling the police, right? I'm not going to call the city hall and go, so I don't know.
But that's what this is here for, because when they call the police, they would work in tandem with.
Okay, so this is, then this is, this is inter, this is basically departments in, not necessarily.
Did you get that language?
That's how I understood it to be, where it's interdepartmental, like.
Okay, I just, I just, I'm trying to work, who's really working with this? I mean, is, is this the city staff working on this document, or is it the public at large?
Well, both.
So, that's why I said.
But I think C-three-point-three is stating essentially that.
No, the clarification was great.
Yeah, police services.
That's all that I have on page three.
I think it's actually an important point to make, that, once we figure out what it meant.
How, a quick question, C-three-four, just for my edification, how, how is that currently done? Evaluation, is it, is it, is it something that's formally done?
Now, let me ask Captain, if I can, it's policy C-three-point-four, I'll read it, continually evaluate the training of law enforcement personnel and their interaction with the citizens of Sierra Madre.
And what that basically means is, we have a, a finite number or, or a budget for training, and so we have to make sure that the training we're providing for our officers is timely and necessary to ensure that they're providing the best quality of service for the community. So, for instance, if say we have insensitivity of, with some of our officers and there's complaints related to that, we'll make sure that we send our officers to more of that type of training. If we see that there's training related to a, a lack of understanding in interpreting some laws, for instance, then we would obviously want to send them to that type of training. So, we're constantly looking at the type of service we're providing, the feedback from the community, and making sure that we're targeting our training to get the maximum, if you will, um, service from, from our officers to the community, and making sure that the training is, is focused on where we need to have training, rather than just arbitrarily sending them to training that may not be, uh, judicious in the use of our budget, if you will.
I have just on.
Page four.
Policy C-four-point-three, just to change design to development review process.
Something we really need to look at through the entire document, I think.
Design review process?
Right, sign, yes. Development review.
So, I have a question about C-five-one. Maintain a code enforcement officer in the police department or in the development services police department or in the development services department who is in charge of the duty of identifying violations, enforcing city codes. So which is it? Is it in the police department, or is it in the development services department? Because one would think that the job requisition would be written differently depending on who employed them.
It may have been written, this, I think when this was written, we were actually reclassifying and putting it in development services. It historically has been in police. And it, and it's, it.
So do you have a code enforcement officer?
We do. We do have a part-time code enforcement officer.
And does the police department do, do enforcement?
They do. They help out.
Do they have someone whose job it is to do code enforcement?
I believe it's shared.
So it's not one department or the other? It's got jurisdiction involved?
Well, development services, we do have an assigned code enforcement officer, but he is here no more than twenty hours per week. And so for days that he's not, because police is patrolling, they will certainly give us, you know, contact our code enforcement officer for him to follow up, or take the initial courtesy notice to a person who may be violating a code.
Is that norm, I just doesn't seem, it seems to me like the police function is one function and development services function's another. Where is the, it's a different kind of enforcement, right? One is police enforcement.
It's still enforcement of the law. You know, it's, it's our municipal code, so it's, it's both.
So can I ask the city manager, is this normal for this to be in either or?
Yes.
It's law enforcement.
I, that seems to me that it's law enforcement. It should be in the police department.
But it's, it's law enforcement in terms of you could have illegal building activity, and that's still law enforcement. That's, that's subject to a misdemeanor.
I'd have to say that if you were to, to survey ten cities, five would have it in one place and five in the other place, and there's always an overlap.
So do we have it in one place or in both places?
It is, it is technically in development services, but the police department will help, as Director Castro explained, we only have a part-time code enforcement officer. So the police department will help out when the code enforcement officer isn't here.
If the vision is that it should be in development services with supplemental support from the police department, then we should say that.
I think here, the intent here was to have the flexibility. It was in the police department for many years.
Was.
Was, in the police department for many years. A year ago, we switched it to development services. It could go back again. It really depends on the staffing levels that we have available to us. And I would prefer to have the flexibility for it to go in either place, because this is a, a twenty-year document before you.
Doesn't bother anybody else? I think it's weird. So no one else is bothered? I will cede. Come on.
I think the, to me, the point is there will be a code enforcement officer.
Someone, yes.
And the exact chair that they sit in does not really affect how it gets done that much.
Be nice that there was one.
Yes.
Well, I'm just, I'm, my question is, if it's in development services and it's twenty hours a week, who's paying for that? And if it's in, the police department's twenty hours a week, where's that money coming from?
Well, it's, it's, it's within the allocated budget of development services. It's been budgeted, within that.
So then it should be in development services total?
In, in either place, it's general fund dollars, so it doesn't really matter which department it's in. It's general fund dollar. This is a general fund funded activity. So whether it's in P D or development services, it's the same dollars.
I think it's important that it stay within the police department so that it's twenty-four seven. If it was development services, then it'd only be somebody twenty hours a week. The police department's able to see if a code violation twenty-four seven. That's, I think it's good the way it is.
I think we're good with it. Page five. I just had a one thing, which it may be fine the way it is, but C five point five, is conduct targeted proactive code enforcement of violations involving sign regulations, business license, regular garage sales and other activities. Isn't it much wider than that, like, for the code enforcement? Or is it, could, when this doc, when, sometimes this document necks down to like specific examples, it, it's, seems like it's too narrow, like, so it's signs.
Yeah.
Business license and garage sales. You know, I think it's more than that.
And other activities, but you could, you could limit it to say conduct targeted, well, I, I think that the targeted proactive maybe was.
Just those three things and other activities?
At the time the committee was looking at it, perhaps they felt that this was what they wanted to target, but code enforcement does not limit to, to just that. It is more wide and encompassing.
I just say and other activities.
I kinda think the other activities.
So it kind of negates.
Other activities.
I wonder if we, I wonder if there could be a general description of the sorts of things that these violations, what they're trying to get at here in particular, you know? Rather than specifically list a few items, what's the issue here? I'm not sure why these things go together, in turn, why these have been pulled out.
Yeah, it seems like, well, I mean, I'm only guessing because these have been hot-button issues for code violations.
Of violations that occur frequently or, or, you know, that are more frequent or something. Might be the issue they're getting at.
Like illegal garage sales.
You can.
Things that happen during weekends, you know, like garage sales or somebody cutting down a protected oak on the weekend when city staff is not in town or something.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of something that was more general and encompassing, but to give that latitude, is if, you know, I mean, this is indeed a twenty-year document, like, I don't necessarily know. This seems very much like.
Things may come up, different things probably come up every five years.
Might not have issues with signage, but maybe something else.
Do you have perhaps more general language you'd like to test? And I, I caution you because it's.
What are you, what are you trying to get at?
It says targeted, targeted proactive and.
What, what are you trying to get at?
I think I just have kind of a slight issue with that it's, it's pulling out these.
Too narrow?
Not, they're sort of non-sequiturs. They don't, signage, business license and garage sales, like, that's proactive code enforcement for these things that don't necessarily go together or kinda.
So what if you said conduct targeted proactive code enforcement of violations involving matters of great concern to the community, or something like that? So it was broader rather than these specific things. But.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you could use something such, such as, but not limited to.
Well, I'm saying, you don't, I, I agree, those aren't the most egregious things in the world, but you could just say matters of concern to the community and you get a lot of leeway.
That would.
That's good, because they're likely to change over time.
Yeah.
And I think matters of concern would allow whatever the, whatever the certain issue that's bothering, you know, this year it's chicken, roosters, and next year it's barking dogs, you know? It's, it's likely to change over time.
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Let's say this general plan goes through.
Uh huh.
And let's say.
Hypothetically.
When it.
Are you on the fence?
Maybe it's a little negative. When this general plan goes through, in a year's time, let's say we go, that's the stupidest thing we ever, can we change that one thing at that time?
Yes.
Without changing the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you have, there is a, a statutory limit to the number of amendments, three per year, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You can change the general plan. You can amend it up to three times in a calendar year. And so usually what staff will do, if they see a number, if, if you can tell at any given time that, oh, there are a few coming in, you know, you try to kind of hold them and lump them and, and bring them through together. Sometimes something comes through, the one time it goes through, but.
So there could be multiple changes under one amendment, yeah.
And it, it's, it's actually quite common after you have a, a really big general plan update like this, for there to be a couple of omnibus corrections that come through, because despite having hundreds of pairs of eyes on this thing, much to everyone's agreement, you know, the, a few nits get through that, that aren't noticed until later. So, you know.
You control that committee.
Nits and nats.
So what was gonna be, issues of concern to the community?
Volving matters of concern to the community?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
I think that's, that makes more sense.
You know, one of the biggest things about code enforcement, unfortunately, is your neighbors are the ones that are gonna do code enforcement. It's basically, it's everybody in town. It's not just, not just somebody that's here twenty hours a week, spread out over, you know, it's everybody in the town. It's like, when you see somebody doing something, that's a little fishy call city hall.
I have to tell you that that's, most of the calls we get is, you know, that's what generates our code enforcement activities, because the residents themselves are the eyes and ears of the issues, and they let us know, and then we, then respond.
Right. And if a bunch of people came down to the hearing and said, we don't like this, or we don't like that, those would be the matters and concern that we would probably be, start becoming proactive, huh? Because people would be voicing a public concern.
Yeah.
Or that the police department knows what the issues of public concern are, because they hear the issues of public concern on a regular basis. And that, that makes, that's cool.
All right, moving forward to section two.
Recreation services.
So I called this one out in one of the early chapters just for consistency. It says the city maintains five parks, and then down in the subsection, we list six. So the only question is, is Kirsten Court a park as it's listed below? And if it is, then this needs to be six, and it needs to be added there. And if not, it needs to be removed from the other section, and we have five. So is Kirsten Court a park?
Mm-hmm. It is.
It is. Okay, then we need to change five to six and add it into the list there, which will be consistent, I think, with what we did in chapter one or two when we did the last time.
If I may, within that same paragraph, where I just wanted to make a correction, where it says with a total of one hundred and forty-nine acres of open space, the city of Sierra Madre has a ratio of approximately thirteen acres of park space for every thousand people. It's actually thirteen acres of open space. I just wanted to make that correction because it's significant.
Oh. Seven? Eight? Guess we're at, you have a highlight here, Objective C six.
C six. Again, we have a situation in Objective C six, I'll read it. Provide quality recreation, leisure and social programs and facilities for the Sierra Madre community. This objective is actually the same as the goal. And it really needs to be an objective that supports the goal. So we have just an alternate language, if you may, and it's optimizing recreation, leisure and social programs and facilities in the city.
What does optimizing mean?
Making them the best they can be, right?
Making, yeah, really, that's what it is.
Was it making them the best they can be, or utilizing what you have to the highest degree? Is it a resource thing, or is it?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is our area where, right, efficiency matters, because, great, let's just, you know, we can spend as much as we want and have all those services in the world, or we can, you know, live within our means. So I'm not sure what optimizing means.
Well, it kind of goes back, if you go, for example, go to.
Summary.
The goal on page eight, summary of recreation goals. Again, a comment that Commissioner Goldstein made, made on an earlier one, it's a high level of quality recreation.
I'm fine with that there.
You're okay with that there, okay?
Safety, I want to know.
Safety was different.
Wait, 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 come on. I want exceptional level of.
Given the budget issues, I'll take a high level of quality recreation right now.
And I think, I think why, why staff had, it was just, when, when you say provide quality recreation.
Yeah.
I, I guess, what is quality recreation? I think we all know that's.
Could we, I mean, several, a couple of the things list youth, adults and seniors. So could that be part of the objective, which is to provide quality recreation for all segments of the population of Sierra Madre?
I like that.
For Objective C six?
Mm-hmm.
Say it again?
Provide quality recreation, leisure and social programs for all segments of the Sierra Madre community. It says, you know, it lists twice here, youth, adults and seniors, and then general citizenry, and it lists different kinds of programs, so kind of addressing the issue of different populations that all need to have something to do.
But then are there policies that, that don't fit when you narrow it down? Like, C six three, how does that research better use of existing city open space, which is more land use?
Yeah.
Well, maybe that one doesn't belong.
I circled it, doesn't belong.
Really go, because all the rest of these pretty much go together, but that one doesn't really go with this.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that one needs to be moved. Has to do with open space more. Augustine Park and.
Which one are you on now?
C six seven three.
I might be able to go under C eight, Objective C eight.
It's like it maybe belongs to a different objective.
The preservation of existing park space.
It could go under C eight.
We could say parks, park and open space and recreational facilities, and then.
Yeah. Objective C eight, it could go.
Existing parks, open space and recreational facilities. Means Objective C eight.
Oh, the preservation of existing parks, open space.
Open space and recreational facilities, and then move that C five point, what was?
No, six point three.
Six point three into that category.
Yeah. Okay, that works.
So at this point in our history, do we provide it, or do we subcontract it? How do we, how do we do this?
Adam, Adam Matsumoto, our recreation supervisor, supervisor manager, will, and address this.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you repeat the question?
Well, I'm trying to rectify this, the difference between the objective and the goal, right? So I'm good, I'm actually good with the goal, a high level of quality recreation, leisure and social programs, facilities. Then we say, provide, okay? So that, to me, is the difference right now, just in the straight wording, between the goal and the objective. This one says it's gonna be there, this one says we're gonna provide it. Do we provide it, or do we subcontract it? Do we monitor it? Do we manage it? What do we do?
We provide a variety of services for the community. Some are contracted out, others are provided directly through the community services department. Our contracted services include the daycare facility, as well as our teen center at the youth activity center. The aquatic services are now contracted out through Waterworks Aquatics. We do provide a variety of services in-house, though, special events, things of that nature.
Perfect. I got it. Thanks. So manage or subcontract is the verb that you want there, because that's how we're meeting the goal. So I would say.
I don't know, because I think the word provide.
Could be.
Means they exist. It doesn't necessarily mean who provides it. I mean, the city is paying for them to be provided, so.
Well, it's like we got a baseball field, though. We're providing the field, the Little League gets to use it, right?
So the Little League does it. I don't.
Well, if you want to, to me, that's the distinction. The distinction of the goal is we wanna have the stuff. The objective is we're going to either manage it, or we're going to subcontract it. We're gonna do one of those two things.
Well, we're gonna provide it, or we're gonna subcontract it.
Okay, well, then we don't need to change it, if you don't.
We're gonna provide it. I mean, some of it we actually provide, and I think provide is.
Then it doesn't need to change.
Are you talking about the Objective C six or the policies?
I'm trying to rectify Danny's original comment, that he thought there was too much overlap between the goal and the objective. So I was just trying to tease them apart.
Got it.
It doesn't, I'm not bothered with it, as is, but if we wanted to tease them apart, that would be the difference, to me.
But like, that, the, where you parse out the managing or the providing, seems like that would be a further dig down, like, that'd be a policy.
I don't have a strong prob, problem with it. I'm just, just trying to say, what is the difference? One is the goal's, it's gonna be there, and then the objective is we're going to do it. And so doing it can either be through managing it or through subcontracting. If you don't think, you need that level of specificity, then it's fine.
Maybe it's provide the opportunity for quality programs.
Well, I would not object to inserting the word efficient here, because I do think that there needs to be some reference to, to some trade-off between cost and level of service, yeah. This, to me, is discretionary, where I don't think public safety is.
I disagree, but that's a personal opinion.
Well, but I mean, I think this.
I think it's equally as important to the quality of life in Sierra Madre to have quality activities for the people who live here.
I completely agree. But I would just, I would say, I would say, provide efficient quality recreation if we were going to change it at all.
Doesn't sound fun at all.
We don't have to change it.
Let's not, efficient recreation.
Well, efficient means that it's a good use of public, public funds.
I think, actually think Danny's word optimize in the sense, it can mean, it can mean multiple things. Optimizing could be efficiently using the resources you have to maximize. You're optimizing what you have for quality recreation. I'm fine.
What did I, was this where I said for all?
Yeah, you said for all segments. So provide quality recreation, leisure and social programs for all segments of the Sierra Madre community is what you said.
Big bite.
And then.
I would say for broad spectrum, I don't know if I would go to all, but all's a big bite. Then you've got a test that you're meeting each class.
For the various segments.
That's good.
For the various?
I really think we should go provide the opportunity because we're not, we're not necessarily going to be out front of these things. Somebody wants to come and go, hey, we've got a bunch of senior citizens who want to play soccer, that doesn't mean we're going to provide everything to do that. We're going to give them an opportunity to do that someplace, you know what I mean? So I don't know how structured it's going to be.
Because it says.
They provide it, what'd you say?
C six point six covers that. Encourage sponsorship of programs by local businesses and participation from the community.
Encourage.
There you go.
There's a dollar sign.
It's right there. It says, we don't have to do it. We can get other people sponsoring. It's covered, it's covered.
I should have known about it.
As long as they get proper signage.
Keep reading. It's there somewhere. There's a lot of stuff in here, you know?
All right, I think we're, I think we got somewhere. I don't know.
So can I just read objective C six against me? Provide quality recreation, leisure and social programs and facilities for the various segments of the Sierra Madre community.
Fabulous.
I think we can do that.
And then we're going to move C six three to objective C eight.
Yes.
Objective what? C, what'd you say?
Six three.
C six point three, which is research better use of existing city open space to objective C eight, which is under.
Because that's not a program.
Yeah, preservation of existing parks, open space and recreational facility. On page 10, Adam, if we, if I just, there is a suggested change to this policy. I think it was really to update it, basically.
For section C eight point seven, I would actually like to amend this. I had taken out the section regarding research both public and private funds for improvement, maintenance of existing pool facilities. We already have that in place. So really, it's, it's a rewording of that. So it should be to continue the private spa, or private partnership to maintain and improve existing pool facility, municipal pool facility. And then the red, the addition should be an additional C eight point eight, continual maintenance program for the city's recreation center to include routine and long-term maintenance of the facility.
You amended C point eight seven and then added C point eight eight.
Correct.
C eight point eight.
The stuff in red is eight point eight.
So the red section would be.
Then what you want to change eight point seven to?
To continue the private partnership to improve and maintain the existing pool, municipal pool facilities.
Did we say private and public partnership?
Well, that's what it did say, but it's because, you're basing Waterworks.
Waterworks leases our facility and they provide all the maintenance and capital improvement funds for that. But we do administer that, that contract. So it could be, it can, we can still keep it as a public and private partnership in the language.
I mean, they have to work with the city.
They still do, yes.
So I think it's better to call it partnership, just.
We can do that.
And then you had a new city is not there at all. C eight point eight too, right?
That's the items in red here, the second, continual maintenance program for the city's recreation center to include routine and long-term maintenance of the facility.
Oh, okay, I see.
This gets bumped to.
I get it, I'm sorry.
So here's, I don't know, this is a nitpicky question, but in this eight point five, continue to improve the conditions of how dapper field to maintain the field's safety and usability, such as very specific example, is it, is there a major concern or issue?
With dapper fields specifically, we haven't had as strong of a partnership with the user groups for that particular field. For Heasley Field, it's one of our main baseball fields for both girls softball and little league. And they invest quite a bit into that facility in order to maintain and run it. Our pony league, which utilizes dapper field, isn't quite in, as involved. It doesn't have the, the monetary support that those other leagues have to maintain that field. In recent years, they've had more of an opportunity to do some field improvements, some leveling of that field, the infield area. But it is a, an item that we would want to pay particular concern to because of the lack of resources the pony league has compared to little league and girls softball.
Yeah, I think so. Is there anything else? We're good? Okay.
Page 11?
Page 11?
And as you see in the red, there's policies suggested.
Update, yeah.
These are staff added suggestions as well. Again, we've started some new projects and, and services since the last time this was updated. So this is more of a reflection of what our current process, or our current services that we're, that we're trying to provide for our senior population. Currently, what we're doing right now is we're going through a master plan update. So we wanted to include that as part of this section because that's going to help shape the ways in which we provide those services for our senior population. We're going through a, as the committee head, or commission has, knows about a project to increase and expand storage space at our senior center, as well as within the past couple of years, we've had increased participation from our senior community commission to provide funding for senior specific programs at the senior center due to some of our budget reduction. So we wanted to include that as an update for this document.
That all places specific.
Yeah. See, C nine point eight is not, it's not a policy. It's.
Sure.
It's a, it's a specific, it's a specific action and it shouldn't go here. We could say, you know, maintain or improve the Hart Park House to better serve.
Yeah.
Yes.
Seniors. But this, this level.
We can change that, that's fine.
Specificity belongs at the very, in.
An implementation.
That's an implementation.
In the senior master plan.
It belongs in implementation, not in, not at this level.
Would the update of the senior master plan, the same thing?
No, I think senior master plan.
That's overview.
I think that's an overview and that's good. But this one, I mean, we can say something about, you know.
How would you, say again what you said?
I think I said, I think I said.
Improve the Hart Hart House or.
Yeah.
Improve and maintain or whatever.
Improve and maintain the Hart, Hart House to, to serve senior or something. Or to improve programming opportunities, I'd leave that. But this specific level of storage room just doesn't belong here.
Hardly debated.
I'm not saying it doesn't should be done. I'm just saying it doesn't belong at this level.
Awfully specific.
Commissioner Buckles, you have any?
No, I don't have a comment on that. I like the way that, the wording that you.
That's better though. That keeps it, that keeps it. Because it could be, today it's a storage room. It could be something else, a second story addition.
We can make those changes.
Yeah, who knows?
I don't think there's a wider rate with the second story addition.
Wine press. All right, good. That's good. Nine point nine, excellent.
Are we on page 12?
I think we are.
Just wondering, you know, this list, C 10 point one, this specific list of, I'm just wondering about a roller hockey rink. Why is that particular thing on the list here? Is there a great call for that?
It's a great, like.
Is there a call for that in Sierra Madre?
Just an amenity that, that's not currently present. You know, part of our, you know, again, it, it just depends on how you would like the document reading in terms of specificity.
Yeah.
You can just include, you know, facilities, recreational facilities of interest to the community to keep it more broad. That's not something that.
I'm not even sure what a roller hockey rink is, but I didn't know there was a call for it in Sierra Madre.
Well, I mean, I, I actually, in this instance, I like the specificity, but I can see why the logic would be to kind of generalize it because unless, is this like a top five list, kind of like, or just kind of made up?
It's not. It's just various amenities that, that.
Don't exist.
Currently don't, aren't provided for the, for the community.
I mean, do other cities in the area have one of those?
Where do you get the property to do that? Where do you get more room? Where are you going to put a softball field or roller hockey rink or? Well, it says explore the possibility. It didn't say. Yeah. We're going to add X Arcadia, okay.
Should we have a skateboard park too?
A skateboard.
That must be part of that wish list.
Those are common.
Well, then we should, if we're going to go have a roller hockey rink, we should look at a skateboard park too.
We talked about that and it came and went some years ago, the discussion of putting a skateboard park in, in the.
Well, let's add it in since we're going to be comprehensive.
No, I'd rather be less comprehensive and more vague.
Well, but it says new, I don't know. Okay, so I'm going back against my wanting, not wanting specificity, specificity here, but it says explore the possibility of creating new activity centers such as these several listed items, but it could be.
It's only listing two things really. One is a multipurpose ball field for soccer, baseball, softball and football. That's one thing. And the second one is a roller hockey rink.
No, the second one's a community gymnasium.
Oh, a community.
Such as.
So there's three things.
And a family recreation.
A multipurpose ball field, a roller hockey rink and a community gymnasium.
No, the roller hockey rink is a subset of the such as.
Is it or is it not?
That's the way it's written.
I don't know. I can't tell. Could be either way.
I read the multipurpose ball field is containing the sports up until the comma followed by and community gymnasium.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Then we have to take out the and before football.
Football, yeah.
Okay. I'm just trying to interpret what's there. I'm fine.
I'm fine with it, but.
Let's just take out the and before football.
Okay.
So if we're going to leave in a hockey rink, I want to have skateboard park.
Well, it's equal, I mean, it makes it equivalent to, I mean, that's like one thing then.
No, in the such as, baseball, soccer, roller hockey rink, skateboard park, just adding another thing on there, and community.
There's a lot of support for a skateboard park in Sierra Madre.
Oh, well, I mean, it does.
We, that came, that came through, that came through us before and there was.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Leave it the way it is. Don't change it.
Take out the and.
Take out the and before football?
Yes.
Because it's all talking about the same.
Right.
10-1, it says such as, so it's not necessarily limiting.
We're good.
They're just listing potential.
Possibilities.
Yeah.
In C 10-4, what's the Quimby Act Proposition A?
Quimby funds are purchases of, I'll have our city manager further explain that.
Okay. Quimby, Quimby funds are basically, they're development impact fees, fees that development pay that has to go towards park development. That's Quimby. Quimby is the, the reference to the state legislator who the law is named after. Prop A is a transportation tax. You pay it on, when you buy, Prop A, sales tax, sales tax related, has to go for, there's Prop A for parks, it's a bond act. It's coming back to me. There's different Prop As. This one here is for parks. It's a bond measure for parks money. And the bicycle fund is also state funding that's available.
I think the B in bicycles should be capitalized.
Capitalized, okay.
Yes.
Specific fund.
It's a specific fund. And that's it.
So you want to establish a fund for park acquisition? This is something we haven't done yet?
There is not a fund established for park acquisitions at the moment.
Okay, so that's, I'm just understanding.
There, we do have the development impact fees that could be used for, it, it has to, we can't use it for maintenance. It could expand, it could be used to expand an existing park. It could be for a new park. This goal is aimed at, for new park acquisition. So we do have a fund, but they're trying to be more specific with how those funds can be used.
What, we have a fund that does what?
We do have a Quimby fund.
So you want to move it over here to this other fund?
Well, not staff. This was the general plan steering committee.
They want to create a new fund and move it over there.
They, no, the fund already exists. They're trying to put some parameters on how the money can be used.
But it sounds like they're also adding, well, the way we read it is you've got Quimby Act money, which is in lieu, part, you know, development impact money. That's, like you said, strictly for, not for maintenance, but expansion or addition of new park space. That's already, it's, by law, it's a fund that exists.
Yes.
But this is adding other potential revenue streams or.
The proposition A is one that, I'm not sure there is any more proposition A funds available. That's an old bond act.
Is that city or county? It's got to be county, right?
It's a state bond act. It was a state bond act.
Can we check and, can staff check and see if there's any of that money left? Because if there is not, then we shouldn't have.
This is an old state bond act. I'm pretty sure. It's just down to maintenance funds at this point. I don't believe, it could be reworded for, you know, future bond, park bond. Could be worded, it probably should be worded more accurately, is future park bond funds.
But this is worded funds for park acquisition.
Should we say state park funds?
You could do that. That would be better. Because Prop A is an old, this Prop A for parks was, I think that bond act was in the 90s.
And I.
If we'd say, under Quimby Act, could we put parentheses that say development impact fees?
It is a little bit different. I think it's, it's.
The problem here is, I don't think, it's, it's already, it's part, the money in that is for parks.
Correct.
Right? So what 10.4 to me is saying is, we want to expand the broad, the scope of where funding for park acquisition. So we want to include not only Quimby Act, but Prop A, bicycle fund, fundraising, public and private.
And grants, correct.
Should we just, just say, is, expand funding for park acquisition using these things?
That, I know what that means versus establish a fund, which I don't know what that means.
Because one's already a fund.
Yeah, expand funding for park acquisition using and put this.
That would be fine.
Much better sense. Okay. Now I understand what it says.
Okay.
And then check maybe.
We'll check with Prop A.
And replace Prop A and put state parks funds or something.
Excellent. Okay, now I understand. Because I didn't know what this fund was. We were going to establish it's a fund of funds.
Could be another letter too in the future.
That's right.
It could be some other prop.
No, it's fine. We got it. She got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is 10.5, I mean, that's how we do business now, right? As far as when you have new development, you either provide the open space onsite as a percentage or you pay fees that go into Quimby Act, basically the Quimby Act or you.
The latter. We do, they do have to pay impact fees.
Regardless of whether they provide?
In, in residential, in residential, there's a requirement in multifamily residential for onsite. But in single-family residential, it's, it's just a matter of.
You just pay a fee.
Setbacks and, yeah, but you pay a fee, yeah. Well, multifamily, you pay a fee also. You pay impact fees for.
Require that all new.
Say, say the development of the monastery goes forward, are they required to provide open space areas on, would they be required to provide open space areas onsite?
Repeat that again, say that again, if you.
The development of the monastery goes forward. The development of the monastery goes forward, it was, do you know how, say, I'm not, opining about this, this isn't it, but-
Can you repeat that, please?
If the development of the monastery goes forward, are they required to set aside some land for parkland?
No, they, they, they are, require to pay development impact fees, which is money in lieu of parks, they also, the law's interesting, the law does allow for setting aside, I think you have that option, but oftentimes, the development impact fee is in lieu of actually providing land.
So they could, instead of giving money to buy a park, they could donate a chunk of that land and make a park out of it?
You could, my understanding of mitigation fee act and park and Quimby-
Often than not, what happens is it's more cost effective to pay.
It often doesn't occur, because in most infill projects, or projects in communities that are built out, it's often that, it's the, the easier thing is to pay the fee, and that's-
And not sacrifice the property.
Right, and not set aside either within the property, or-
But it could go either way, that's interesting.
So, okay, well, you clarified that require that all new commercial and residential developments provide open space areas onsite for passive or active recreation, or contribute fees for public, but you said sing, multifamily residential, that option exists, so it provides open space, it's required, but for single-family, obviously, that you're not providing park space on your property.
On site, you're, you're not?
Does it, do we need to differentiate that, then, or?
You are, I mean, you can't cover the entire lot with buildings, so there is open space left in a single-family house, actually.
That much, it's not public. Have you been to Arcadia lately?
Well, it doesn't say, it doesn't say public here, it just says open space areas onsite for passive or active recreation, it doesn't actually say public. Look across the street at the building, their building, you know, there's a lot of open space there.
But this falls under objective C ten, which is increase, the increase of parkland and recreational facilities in the city, I take that as-
So maybe this needs to say provide public open space onsite.
And the more I read it, I, I'm, I'm wondering if this means for, for larger, larger planned developments, not just, yeah, not just single, you know, one lot.
Lots, exactly.
Multifamily, but perhaps, you know, a large tract of land that is being developed. Maybe that needs to be distinguished here.
I think, I think the only, the residential developments needs to be encompassing, encompassing of what you're talking about, you know, like multi-unit or larger subdivision or something.
Subdivisions, we could include residential subdivisions.
I think adding that would, oh.
Page thirteen, right?
Yeah.
We have highlighted two policies, C twelve point two and C twelve point three, C twelve point two says explore the possibility for special events involving bicycle programs, we don't think it has, let me see here. I guess we found it wasn't clearly aligning with the objective, so we suggested that it moved to objective C six.
Recreation.
It's got to be, yes.
Right, and it goes to provide, you know-
Quality recreation, yes.
Yeah.
Good idea.
You know, you could swap, you took out C six three there.
Right, and then for C twelve point three, we suggest moving that, and I'll read it first, offer free bicycle safety and traffic courses for the community sponsored by the police and community service departments, and we think that it better serves to be under objective C thirty, which is on page thirty-one.
What is that, can you?
That's, C thirty, C thirty is the improvement of traffic safety.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, then you're left with one policy here for C twelve?
That's okay.
Establish a feasible safer.
Are we budgeted to pay for the free bicycle courses and traffic courses? Somebody's getting signed up to give a free course here, so I just want to make sure we have, we have budget for it.
You're asking the question?
I, well, we're saying we're going to offer free bicycle.
Means we're going to find-
Should we seek public-private partnerships for-
I could imagine the cost of this wouldn't be so great.
Say it again?
Cost doesn't sound like it would be that much.
Does it bring your own bike?
There's no free lunch.
Just making sure that somebody, we're signing up the police department and the community service.
Would it have to be something either funded, you know, in order for us to provide the services to do it?
I think private funding, somehow, if that can be added into the sentence, might be good.
Why don't you just drop the word free? Offer bicycle safety and traffic courses.
Who said it's free, yeah?
Why are we giving everything? It could be a nominal fee, I don't care what it is, but don't put the word free there.
Fine, or it could be, it just, it could be either way.
It could be a good policeman that wants to do it, you know, Bicycle Bob wants to do it.
Are we, are we in agreement?
Move it and strike the word free.
Okay, and then move it.
Let's just offer.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right.
Section three.
We're in library services. Carolyn Thomas, the library director is also available, should you have any questions?
All right.
Cleaned in this section.
This is actually very informative. Go here, anything, page fourteen, overview. Comments, concerns? Yeah, I thought so too, page fifteen. I had a question there on fifteen, actually, it's just a silly question, but there's a paragraph here talking about the architect who designed the, the, the library, is there any kind of notation of that on the building, or? I thought that was, obviously, I'm biased, but I thought that was, that was really neat.
Yeah.
So is there a-
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Thomas, no, that's something that I added in, I discovered Robert Ainsworth in my short time here, and discovered that he was a town resident, and he is a very well-known mid-century architect, he designed the Pasadena Humane Society, he did the map for Pasadena City College, the original plans, some very impressive homes in San Marino, and we have, we're fortunate to have this example of his architecture in the library building itself, it is a building he designed, so at this point in time, there's no designation, is, I want to get the information out there, and I'm not sure how to proceed at this time.
Yeah, I think that, that's interesting, a low factoid that would be worth sharing in some way.
Just the technicality, it, it says the library building was built by a, in build it, he designed, architects don't build-
Was designed?
Yeah, designed by.
Okay.
We think we built, but, yeah, that's probably a good distinction. Yeah, that was neat. Alright, fifteen, I don't think we had anything, and then just-
For grammar's sake, then if you're going to change the word built to design, then you should put in the end of the sentence, a home he also designed, but also in there.
Also, yeah.
Also. Page sixteen? No takers, seventeen? Got some additions, I guess, here.
These are changes that they made.
There are changes, yeah.
Do you like Carolyn Thomas to just describe these changes?
Yeah, please.
Basically, I was updating the, the library service goals, taking out the verb, it was recommended to do that, and, so the first one is, library service goals, collection services and programs that support the community needs, a little more succinct.
When you say collections, you mean collections of media materials?
The, the library collections.
Right, I just, yeah.
The entire span of library collections, in other words, we collect things that the community wants.
No, no, I understand, I just didn't know if it needed another descriptor, that's all.
You might say library collections, because collections also has an entire-
That's what I was thinking, yes.
Like collecting money from people who didn't pay their bills.
That's what it read to me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Enhance collections.
Yeah, we could put library collections.
Sounded like, yeah, financial collections.
I'd be in real trouble.
And, and even if we did, it would be like a quarter.
What's that?
So-
Private sponsorship again.
Get text messages.
The term they use, but it does have another meaning, and I just wonder if I should say.
Yeah, that's a, I can make that correction.
Okay, there we go, thanks.
Two, changed it from enlarge and improve the existing library facility to just say an improved library facility that meets ADA requirements, supports technological enhancements, and includes a community room, when it was originally designed, it had a community room, which is now the Rotary Children's Library, so we really don't have a space for a community room, and the building, when it was designed and built in nineteen fifty-five, did not meet ADA requirements, and so we have a number of issues for shelving and space.
So what, what is wrong with the enlarge, I mean, it seems like, because later in the document, it talks about the additional property down, you know, this other side of the street, and-
You'd say, say improved and enlarged.
Yeah, what, why wouldn't we, I mean, wouldn't the goal, would, would a goal be to enlarge, because some of the things you talk about adding, or doing, or enhancing, I think it would require space, not just shuffling the space you have.
It could, I do know that the library has attempted prior to, in prior years, to build an expanded facility several times, in the seventies, and in the nineties, and then the early two thousands, and nothing went through, the funding simply wasn't available to enlarge the space, and I have done some research and found that really, you need, optimum is square footage per community resident for a public library space is one point one square feet, and so we're just a little shy of that, at eighty-seven hundred square feet, so we maybe don't need a completely enlarged facility, but some way find some space for community room.
Improved leaves room for, I mean, I think improved is good, because it can enlarge or not enlarge, you can do it either way, I think it's fine without, I think it's good.
We need an S.
You need an S, yes.
We need an S on the end of support, though.
Where are you?
Support technological enhancement.
Support, okay, okay. Three, sufficient funding to sustain library services and open hours?
I'd love to have a, I'd love to have a goal that increased the open hours if funding were available, but that's just my prejudice in terms of library.
Well, maintaining existing open hours is part of the library strategic plan, but that's a funding issue.
If we went to like- Good, that's good, I think it's good, yeah.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay, a library that provides current historical and relevant information to the community. Where are you?
Next page.
Okay, thirteen point two.
ILS.
Okay, implement, well, I updated thirteen point two because frankly, I didn't know what the city enterprise management system was, that might have been some computer system at one time. So I said it specifically for implementing an updated integrated library system, we refer to it as an ILS, to store library records and inventory, and evaluate open source ILS options for contributions, this is part of the library strategic plan, but it's something that will be outgoing in all future years that I can conceive of, the integrated library system is the bread and butter, if you will, of library operations, it houses all of our records, all of our collections, all of our patron records, our fine and fee schedules, our collections for fines and fees, as well as the art collection, historical collection, and the system we currently have was purchased in two thousand and two, it's outdated, and the company is no longer upgrading the system, it cannot withstand any new technological updates, for example, eBooks, or video streaming and things like that, so we really need to move in another direction, and I don't know how the technology will change in the next ten years, but it seems to be changing at least every three years now, and I'd like to get going on that.
Is this, is this term likely to change within the next ten years? I mean, because we had another term here that is outdated now.
Yeah.
That was the enterprise management, and I'm just wondering if we could say, implement updated, whatever this is.
Is it a digital?
Library, computer technology, is this what it is?
It's more than just computer technology.
What is it?
It is the entire system that we, it's the inventory control system, if you will, that we-
So can we use, I, I don't think, nobody's going to know what this means except you, integrated library system. So can you give us a few words that a layperson would understand what that means?
Yeah, say twenty years from now, or fifteen years from now.
You know?
The-
It's like a data management system, right?
Is it a database?
I mean, it's like a database, right?
You said inventory.
Inventory management system? Is that what you're thinking of?
Well, that's part of it, it also, it houses all the collections, but it also houses all the private patron records.
So it's the record-keeping system, what it is?
Part of it.
It's-
I mean, it doesn't physically house the records, it's like, it's a technology that houses the records, right?
Could we, could we put something like, implement, or? I think you could say computer technology.
Or could we just say implement updated library system to store library records?
Library management system.
To store library records?
There you go, library management system.
It's an LMS, that's what it is.
But it doesn't, I mean, I guess my confusion here, you're saying it stores the records and inventory, and I was thinking it included the actual physical inventory, but it's actually just the, it's the list.
Well, it does include some full text.
Oh, it does?
But it doesn't include like the physical books, a part of this, it's like, it's a list of the names of the physical books.
Well, it includes the full text of many books.
In digital format, yeah.
You're not talking about the actual-
It's a database, it's like digital.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I think library management system.
Is it system with an, not plural, or systems?
Well, it's not a proper, it's, I don't think it's a proper name, that's not what it's called.
Yeah, I think it's not going to be capitals, it's going to be lowercase.
Yeah, library management system.
Okay.
It's not an official term.
The other question is, is it, it sounds like implement updated, like as if we already have a version two point O, and we're going to be implementing an updated version, but you're, the way you talk about it is like, we don't have this right now, it's like a new, a new system.
We have an outdated system.
So we want to acquire a new system?
Yeah, essentially, so I don't think it's an updated, I think it's just implement a library management system.
A new library management system.
Well, we have a system now.
The most outdated.
But you want a new one.
It's not like we're going to-
I think the library will need something in, we, we need some terminology that allows us to have a management system for all of the library records and patron records in future years.
Carolyn, is, is ILS-
Maintain an up-to-date?
Carolyn, is ILS a term of art, or is it a term that you use here in Sierra Madre?
It's a professional term.
If I go down to the Los Angeles, if I go down to the LA Public Library and say, do you guys use ILS, what do they say? you guys use ILS?", what do they say? They know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, if I go to the New York Public Library and ask them if they use ILS, do they know what we're talking about?
Yes.
So it is a term of art.
Yes.
This is something that's used broadly.
Yes.
So I don't have any problem with that if this is something that's used...
An integrated library system is...
As you've used here, this is...this is like saying a Ford or a Chevy. It's something that people know what it is. It can be looked up.
Librarians know what it is, but we don't know what it is.
I...you know, there's lots of things in the document that refer to laws and property management. This is a term...this is the standard, definitive open source standard that the industry's using.
Yes.
And I don't have any problem with the way it's referenced. I think that that's what it is.
Or you could say library management system such as...
It's not. She's saying this is the definitive standard. This is what people are using, and it's moved to open source, which means it's supported.
But my issue is, yes, that's today. But if it's open source, these names change like in 10 years.
No, the open source...actually, an ILS system has many different vendors. There's Cersei Dynex. There's Millennium. There's Evergreen is an open source. Koha is it? Sierra is an open source, yeah. So it's the broad term.
I just didn't know what this term meant. And I expect other people who look at this are not going to know.
But when you read it further, though, I think it does like implement update...okay, if you don't know what ILS means, it says to store library records and inventory, which lends you to believe it's some sort of system that allows you to do that, the following, which...
I'm not going to fight it.
Okay.
Didn't make sense to me, so.
How about maintain an updated library management system?
I think it's fine. She said what it is. It's a term of the industry. It can be looked up. It can be Googled. It's in Wikipedia.
Well, but I mean, to that point, I think maintain because we have some semblance of a system currently.
We do.
And this isn't sort of going from French to English. This is like enhanced. So I think maintain.
What were your words?
Maintain an up-to-date...
Library management system? Computerized? Okay.
Well, you can just say maintain an updated integrated library system, ILS, to store library records and inventory. I think we're okay with leaving it the ILS. Well, most of us.
I'm thinking, though, that evaluate open source ILS options for cost savings may be a...
Separate?
It may be a implementation.
Oh, not a policy.
Not a policy.
It's an action. Would be an action item.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're doing it, though.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, it takes it further to say we're going to actually do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we got something there, yeah?
Can I give a note of explanation?
Sure.
The standard ILS systems are all by big companies. So you can house all your records with these big companies, or you can go to a cloud-based, open-source management system, which many small libraries are beginning to do. And so I think it would be wise to investigate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Great, thank you.
I'm also wondering if 13.3 is maybe a action step and not policy?
Well, step back. What are we trying to...what would be the policy there? Because there's a whole part that the self-service system, trying to go to a more self-service or self-managed...I don't know, checkout or check-in?
Well, that may be the actual...
So the first part would go as an action?
Yeah. The second part would be...
Is that what 13.3 is trying to get at, is investigating or looking at self-service?
RFID is a tracking system.
Yeah.
And it allows you to track the books, and people can check them out and check them Was it the General Plan Steering Committee put this in initially? Yeah. It maybe has already passed us by a little bit. There are other things we can do.
So could it be evaluating transitioning to new technology for material security and circulation?
That's better. That's better.
New technologies.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah.
That just seemed pretty specific.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's all...
It's so fast.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Anything else there? We're good? Okay. Page 19. We have a correction or policy C15-2?
Okay. When this was originally written, I think it was one of the library policies to offer quality, cost-effective programs and materials to enhance job seekers' career retraining and student tutoring. It's kind of shifted goals a little bit in the library. I looked up the unemployment statistics for Sierra Madre, and it's 8.5% for people over 25. We have a highly educated community. We don't do a lot of re...job retraining in this community. Other cities do, but we're a highly educated community that doesn't necessarily focus there. And instead, what we wanted to do was to identify the user groups within the community that are not using the library. And right now, we have...we'll be working with ESRI, the geospatial mapping company. We've been selected as one of four libraries to use a GIS system to do service maps for Sierra Madre, one of four in the state. So that's kind of neat. And Development Services has a GIS system, but we'll be trained on that. I think that would be more forward-thinking to look at the populations that we're not serving within the community and then be able to do targeted outreach with them.
Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, great, yeah. Do we have anything else there? No? Page 20?
What...the only thing that got struck...I'm sorry, just my thing just jumped. The only thing that got struck there that I did was student tutoring. We are doing that or we're not doing that?
We don't.
No?
People get tutored in the library, but we don't offer that as a program.
Facilitated.
Yeah.
Would you like to or is it not needed?
We have a fantastic teen docent history program where teens are being recruited to learn our...all of our local history. And they are being tutored with our partnership with the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society. And we've grown the program this year from zero up to about 28 teens, and they're providing those tutors. So target...targeted, specific tutoring.
Got it. Okay.
But not homework help, really.
Yeah, got it.
Target special programs.
Perfect.
It allows for more variability in programs as time goes by.
Okay.
Yeah, objective C19.3.
This one, we took a community survey in 2012 and had a focus group. We...library board of trustees and other community members were part of this strategic plan. It got passed by the library board of trustees and with resolution by the city council, and we've just begun the implementation. But I see this as something that will be revolving. We should have a library strategic plan every three years or so to renew and refresh our goals.
Excellent. That brings us to section four.
Before you go away.
You found it?
Yeah, never mind.
All right, thank you. Section four, community culture and special events.
So does anybody else find the first sentence of this section unusual? The city of Sierra Madre is different from most surrounding cities in that there are few existing city facilities used for cultural enhancement. Seems like a relatively negative sentence to me.
It's a very negative sentence. Especially since it goes on and on and so it lists dozens of different events that go on here.
It just felt like that was a real downer.
I just wanted to get it out of the way.
Don't you want to live in another city that has more culture than we do? It just didn't seem like a very nice sentence.
I suppose it means that we don't have museums or something, you know? It's...yeah, it's a...
I would like to lose that sentence and just say the city has many private cultural art groups and schools within the city limits and start there. I don't know. We need that first sentence.
I would be happy with getting rid of that. It's kind of irrelevant in a way, really.
And I think...I think perhaps in the objectives and policies, it might address it, but in a different way. So...
I think it's a more positive statement to say the city has many private cultural art groups, schools within the city limits.
I'd be very happy to get rid of it.
I agree.
It also strikes me when I read it as...
Like what?
But then we have to change the last sentence as well, even without such facilities.
Which is fine, too. The city has a very long tradition of offering many one-day weekend events.
Yeah, just take that.
So just take that part of the sentence out.
Nice. All right, special events. Did we miss anything? Is there...covered it all?
Sure, I just had a couple of...the Fourth of July party, they did mention the Beer Garden twice.
Excellent.
I guess it's extremely important.
It is. It's integral.
It probably only needs one mention.
It's a defining moment.
It's a defining moment, but it probably only needs one mention. And then, as I recall, the Dickens, whatever that thing is, the Dickens Village, wasn't it called something else in here?
Whoville.
Yeah.
Whoville.
Maybe we need to sort of...
Which we probably don't want to say because it steps on a trademark.
Yes. We probably just want to say...
Where is that?
It's under signs of the season.
Signs of the season.
Which I thought was kind of an unusual heading because I didn't know what that This is on page 26.
26, yeah.
Signs of the season. It wasn't called Dickens Village, so... I would just...I would rather...I mean, is signs of the season something that is an official name here or is that just something made up? Because I would rather call it winter holidays or something that gives you a hint about what it means. Because something made me think the leaves are... Why is it...why do we have that heading?
Here comes Adam.
I'm not sure why the steering committee had created that. It doesn't have an official name, so the winter holiday festivities or however you want to phrase that. And the same thing with Dickens Village. It does change from year to year depending upon what the...
Can we say Holiday Village?
You could just put, you know, the holiday season event or something like that. That's not a problem.
I'm looking for my...I can't find it on 25. We're moving on. See, I'll come back.
Well, I would have thought that Dickens Village came from his Christmas books.
That's out of copyright. That's okay.
Definitely.
So would Dickens Village be replaced with...
Holiday Village. Exactly Dickens. I always thought that was kind of a funny thing, is if you actually read Dickens, you would know that the Holiday Village wasn't such a cheery place.
On this Christmas one, 25.
This is just a nit...I'm sorry, it's a grammar thing. On page 23...
Yeah, oh, man.
Is Friends of the Library are a nonprofit fundraising and support group? I think it should be the Friends is because Friends of the Library is a collective. Not that it matters.
You have something on 25?
No, it was on 23. That's why I didn't find it.
Okay. All right.
Oh, on 25, hang on. Oh, on page 25, yeah. Halloween, there's no reference to the goings-on at Allegria, which are sort of very major in this community. I thought that sort of is a defining element of a...
But that's not sponsored by the city.
It's not, but...
It's not sponsored by anybody.
Police are up there with...
But they're up there like closing, coordinating the street and...
I mean, there's a booth up there and all that.
In terms of... In terms of planning and coordination, there...it strictly just manifests itself by the residents. We do have the police presence to close off the street, but in terms of planning and implementation of the program, the city is not involved with those activities.
Then we might just say that...
There's a gathering at Allegria. I mean, there...it's there, it's well-known, and there are police there dispatched every year, so I think it's part of what goes on here. You could say an informal gathering. Pardon me?
Yeah.
I...I have some concern about putting something in that is not sponsored or in any way permitted or whatever. The mere fact that we have police there, I don't think converts it into a city-sponsored event.
That there's a tent and there's police and it's being patrolled and that's not a official...
But the thing is, the residents could change on that street tomorrow, they won't have something like that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Be in the know to know about Allegria.
It doesn't happen.
Yeah.
It didn't happen.
Stealth.
Yeah.
Got the Beer Garden on the Fourth of July.
Yeah, we moved one.
We moved one somewhere else.
We're going to have the Beer Garden in two places on the Fourth of July now.
Oktoberfest. All right, well, sounds like we got it covered.
So what did we do with signs of the season? Did we change that? Holiday?
Winter holiday.
Okay, great.
Festivities.
On page 26, on the summary and number one, staff changed the suggestion. It says enhance community, cultural, and special events. I think we just had trouble with enhance community, so we just had a wide range of community, cultural, and special events offered to the community.
A wide range...
Oh, wait, a wide range of community, cultural, and special events.
Yeah. Have the community twice because there's two beer gardens.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Sounds great.
Could we go with spiritual events rather than special events? That's the Halloween in me.
It's a wide-ranging.
We're allowed to do that.
Well-maintained, isn't it?
We asked you this question before. So some of the parks in RAC are provided by third-party contractors, is that correct? That's correct, yes. So we say a well-maintained city website with the latest information on the programs and services offered by the city departments and city-sponsored agencies. So those would be city-sponsored agencies? Correct. Okay, got it. Thanks.
On this, the first sentence on 27.
Oh...
It should be special events.
Yeah, I had that marked. Thanks, Gina. Especial events.
Where is...oh, especial, that's right. We were...
The one thing I marked, she just took it.
I think it's slightly Spanish.
Yeah. Gave it a little more flair to that word.
I was going to call page 27 and then jump in and then...
It's too many years of writing and editing. I can't...
Is that part of that beer garden?
Good for you. Ready to go.
Is that part of the beer garden? Especial?
Please note that the chair wants credit for that find.
Yes, please note in the...
Yes, the official record. Can I ask a question though in twenty-three-two?
Yeah.
Are we building movie theaters?
I had that saying.
I think we should.
Some of it was a question, a question for Adam. Does it really mean outdoor movie screenings? Is that what it really means? Or do we really want to build movie theaters? And this is...
I'm sorry, what page are we on? It's on page twenty-seven.
Twenty-three dash two.
C twenty-three-two.
That, I'm not, it wasn't something that we had, our department had placed into it.
I'm sure there are some, some real estate people would be interested in that if we want to let them know.
Right, the live performance... I think the live performance component would, would still fit. I'm not sure if they had, if they had wanted to convey the movies in our parks that we do, those services.
Public movie screenings would be fine.
Yeah, so we, and we do, we do have that, so if we want to continue and maintain that service...
That would make sense.
We can, we can alter that language to better reflect the outdoor movie series.
But this, this one, this objective talks about like physical building.
Right.
So, and you're saying this came from the general steering committee?
Yes.
And we don't have anybody here verify that.
The likelihood of anyone building a movie theater in Sierra Madre is zero.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't...
Because they only build gigantic, megaplex theaters.
I mean, are we okay with scrubbing that?
Nobody's going to want that when they find out it's ninety feet tall.
Well, this is saying encourage development of live performance. We have a live performance venue, that's fine, but...
And ma, and...
I think you just scrubbed that and you put in the maintain, yeah.
And maintain public movie screenings or continue to provide?
Encourage development of live performance and public movie screenings in the city. Public movie screenings could be indoors or outdoors. You could do them in here, you could do them in the park, but we're not going to build the theater.
Yeah, yeah, just take out the building component.
Sure we'd like to encourage public movie screenings.
They changed performance to performances.
Right.
Performances, yeah.
Yeah, public movie screens, yeah. That works.
I think C twenty-three point four is also extremely specific and the specifics go in an implementation. The address, telephone number, description of activities, calendar events and other relevant information does not belong here.
We, we had some concern when we were reading that, but we didn't know if it was intended to be...
We need to inform residents regarding cultural organizations and events.
Period, yeah.
And then we don't need...
How you do that or...
Okay, well, we, we'll flag that as an implement...
Implementation could be how and the exact information. Was... Thank you.
Are we done on that page?
Twenty-seven, okay. Twenty-eight?
So in twenty-four-one, you had mentioned in an earlier section, the public radio station loop, and I just think we should reference it here as well. Continue to provide the community with city-sponsored information programs by the Electronic Bulletin Board Service, which I didn't know we were operating, comma, public radio station recordings and various community access channels website. Do we have a BBS? Are we operating a BBS?
We have the public radio.
Now, we have the public radio because I record a lot of the announcements, but...
Oh, right, right.
Do we have an electronic bulletin board system?
Oh, we do, yes, yes.
Do people know we do? Because I didn't know we did. Is it the website or is it something other?
It's a SMTV three.
That's the electronic bulletin board?
Bulletin board, right. So they'll have the slideshows with the different update.
Oh, that's what you're calling, I was thinking of electronic, the old-style BBS.
Oh, right, not like a...
Yeah, you don't do that, okay.
Physical presence, no.
What's that picked up on? Is that picked up on cable?
What's that?
Yes, on Channel Three.
Okay, if you don't have cable, if you have DirecTV right?
You'd not see it.
That was my comment because I no longer have cable, I have DirecTV.
There's a lot of people don't have cable.
And there's a lot of people do, and that comes to my comment on C twenty-four point two. Cable casting, cultural entertainment, educational programs, and I'm just wondering if webcasting?
I think it is, isn't it? You can get it on webcast, can't you? KGM.TV?
With KGM, there are some services that are provided by webcasts or streaming possibility. In terms of content, the developed contact, content with the program-specific, you know, shows that you see on SMTV three, currently right now, we don't have that as part of the implementation to, to make that available streaming.
So the cable company that broadcasts the channel, they don't simulcast on the web?
They do not.
Because of the cost?
Right.
Do we pay for that or is that...
It's a paid service.
We pay for the channel? Why are we, what percent of the community is served by that channel?
It's a, I don't, we wouldn't have an accurate reflection of exactly how many, you know, users, we'd have a subscription base on those that utilize cable-based television services, but there's no way to know how many people, people actually watch.
Channel Three.
No, I'm asking what your, what your take rate is. I'm asking what your coverage is. What, what percent of the community is the, so we're paying a fee for a certain number of people to be able to watch this on TV? Do we know what percent coverage that is?
We don't. Well, I don't know offhand how many subscribers of cable service that we have within the community. If you're, if you're talking strictly regarding SMTV three, now our web-based service, that's, that's open to, to everybody, so that's the broadcasting of our meetings.
Yeah, I get that. So if I'm going to what, what you were saying, which is they're paying for a service that's only available to some people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But... What the percentage of...
Right.
Well, you'd have to find that, you'd have to find out how many people have cable still.
And I think most people have cable.
I watch Channel Three, Channel Three and the Dodger games.
But what service do you have?
But I think you're asking, we're paying based on some value.
I, I'm raising the point that you said, which is why is money being expended for a subsection of the community when it can all be accessed via the web, which is ubiquitous, right?
But it can't all be accessed via the web. Not all available on the web because it's not all available on the web.
What, what else is on Channel Three though that's not? I mean, obviously the commission meetings and the city council.
In addition to the city council and planning commission meetings, there is other content that's provided. There's a supplementary channel, Channel ninety-eight, which provides more cultural-based programming.
That we pay money for?
It's a service provided, that's provided by KGM and, and there's a contract for providing that service.
Do we pay for that or do they pay us for the privilege of selling advertising against that?
I guess if you could restate your question, it sounds like we're not answering your question.
I'm reacting to what Gina said, which is we have some information on the web and we have some information on TV and some of the people can get the information on TV and we've chosen not to pay the cable company to also put that on the web. So I'm not sure I understand what, what the logic is and how all these decisions are being made. What is the goal here? What are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to get information out to the community, correct?
Correct. The city pays a contract, pays an annual amount for, in fact, the individual sitting back there right now televising the meetings. We pay for the individual to televise the meetings and we also pay so that these meetings can either be watched on, if somebody doesn't have cable...
Right.
They can watch the planning commission and council meetings over the web.
Okay.
So that is what we're paying for.
So that is paid service, don't it?
That is paid service.
So the money that you pay is enjoyed by all?
Correct.
Okay, and then addition to that, what happens?
Regarding...
This other programming that we're...
Which, which other programming?
Must be Channel ninety-eight, right?
The bulletin board, I would guess.
The city, through the city's cable TV franchise, we receive what's called PEG fees, public education and government channels. We actually receive money to provide that channel. So there's revenue coming in.
That was all I'm looking for.
Okay.
That's the Channel ninety-eight.
We, we receive PEG fees, mm-hmm. And those PEG fees provide that other channel for the, for the other broadcasting.
That can only be provided via cable, it can't be provided via the web.
That can only be provided by cable and that is because it is a cable TV franchise, a state franchise. It is not something the city has any control over.
They're paying.
Mm-hmm. It's a, it's a, it's a franchise arrangement.
Okay. So just to clarify, I don't know if the language here picks it up. The investment that the city makes is on behalf of everyone in the community, whether they see it on TV or on the web, and anything else is funded not by the city, it's funded out of some, some...
The PEG fees.
PEG fees, okay. So that makes good sense to me.
Dylan, one question for you. I, I know I hear complaints from, from concerns from people that the, that the cable's gone down.
That the cable is, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you?
The, the picture's gone for some reason. It's not, not on the screen.
Watching a council meeting or planning commission meeting?
Planning commission, whatever it is, okay. So my question is, if it's gone from the cable, is it gone from the web also?
It depends. Sometimes yes and sometimes no. It depends. It depends on what the issue is that made it come down, that made it go down.
So do we have a service level agreement with the provider?
We have antiquated equipment. In fact, one of the things we're in the process of doing is getting a bid to replace all this equipment.
So it has nothing to do with the provider, it has to do with the...
It could have to do with, it could, it, it, in the past, that's why I said it depends. It, it can be the cable provider itself, having, you know, water leak in somewhere, usually happens when it's raining, which we haven't had much of, water leaks into the wrong place and, and the cable's down. Can be hit by construction crews. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons why the cable channel could go out. But then usually when that happens...
You have service levels and you're paying for a service, right? You're paying for these meetings to be hosted online.
The city is paying for these meetings to be televised and hosted.
Service level agreements with the provider.
Yes, we do.
Do they meet the service level?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And it, and it, and it, and there's some built-in downtime into that because it is, it's technology, it's, it's things that are out of our control, it's the weather...
There are service levels that are monitored and that are being provided.
We don't have a hundred percent service. We don't, we, we...
But we don't pay for it.
It's unreasonable. We, we pay for, we, it's an annual amount we pay. There is, and I'm, I don't have it in front of me, there are provisions for performance and if it falls below a certain performance or are steps we can take, it has never fallen below that performance level since I've been here. There is some, it's just, it's just, you know, it's technology and it just doesn't work a hundred percent of the time.
So I guess I would like some kind of a policy that referenced the service level agreements are met since fees are being expended, so there should be an expectation of service and whoever's providing them.
The problem, the problem with doing that is we don't know if it's, there's, there's different providers. There's the city's equipment.
That's not a provider.
No, but I'm saying this is how, this is how the service is provided. There's so many pieces. There's the city's equipment that we're responsible for. There's a contract with SMTV three, which is really just the gentleman sitting in there to broadcast it. And then there's the cable company and their infrastructure. There's so many components to it.
And then there's like the cable inside your house that could be...
And then there's the cable inside your house.
I understand all this, I do this for a living, okay? I understand all this.
Yeah.
If there are complaints about the service and fees are being expended, there should be a service level agreement and it should be met. And so if the problem is in our hardware, that's not on them. But whatever service level agreement is being promised, it should be delivered and that should be a policy because we're providing these meetings, this information to the public to make decisions.
But what I'm saying, the people we pay the fee to, which is community media of the foothills, ninety-nine percent of the time, if there's an outage, it isn't them.
Then they will be meeting the service level agreement, but there'll be a policy mandating that they meet the service level agreement.
And that is in the contract. They are required to, they're, they're...
But that's an implementation level.
It is, it is in, it is in the contract.
It's not an implementation, it's a policy. Service level agreement is a policy.
And, and there is, there are performance measures in the contract with community media of the foothills.
I've heard the same complaints that Kevin's heard, is that people can't watch the meetings. They want to watch the meetings, they can't get. So all I'm saying is that we sign a contract that has a service level agreement and we hold the provider to the service level.
And what I'm explaining is, is that is already done and that is already implemented.
Then it'll be easier to...
So you could say continue it.
I don't think it's a, I mean, if it's in the contract, that's a contract thing, it's not a policy level thing.
I disagree.
And I, I would just add that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's not a problem with community media of the foothills. It's, it's a...
I wasn't naming a vendor. I'm saying where fees are expended, there should be a service level agreement and it should be met and that should be a policy that we enforce.
And we do. And we do. And we still have the outages because it's not, it's not something that's under our control.
It's a city contracting policy issue, but it's not a general plan policy issue.
I disagree.
Where would you put it?
Right here.
How? Be specific.
I would, I would put it under, uh, maintain service level agreements with contractors assigned to provide such services.
Under Objective C twenty-four?
Uh, it could be a twenty-four...
Yeah.
It could be a twenty-four dot three, it could be an appendage to one of the other ones. But the point is, people are depending on this information. This is an important part of the community that people can't get down here for whatever reasons. They want to watch the meetings, they want to comment. We agree to do that, we agree to provide that information, we pay somebody to do it and they should make good on their contract. That's a service level agreement. So, that's what I would do.
You went to put together some wording on that?
Uh, I just think I did, but I could do it again.
Well, I didn't see anybody writing. Danny, were you writing what he said?
I, I didn't get the last part, so... And I, I saw the TC, did you, can you repeat that then? Because I got the first part.
Go under twenty-four, that's maintenance and it's...
Say it again?
It would go under Objective C twenty-four if it was gonna...
Yeah, yeah.
So it'd be C twenty-four point three, right?
Uh, it could be. Maintain agreed service level agreements with contracted vendors who provide such services. Which speaks to the issue that you raised, that if people have complaints, which I've heard as well, that they can't get the information, that we have a policy that says we will do our best to make sure you get the information. That's all we can do. Can't do more than that.
It works?
Okay.
All right, Objective C twenty-five, there's a twenty-five-seven? That's been added?
That's yours.
Bottom of page twenty-eight.
Again, I'm not sure if you want this level of specificity or not. We have created programs to make it easier and more cost-effective for our local organizations to utilize our city facilities. One of those programs is the, that creation of the volunteer facility attendant program. So we can either leave that in as that specific program or just list as continue to provide programs to make it easier and more cost-effective for local organizations to utilize city facilities.
Now, I think we can move that specific thing to an implementation measure and...
Yeah.
So it's going to be continued programs?
So this would be a implementation?
I think, no, just to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Continue programs to make it easier, more cost-effective for local organizations to utilize city facilities. And just say, as an implementation of that, say-
Okay.
Volunteer facility-
Such as the specific program.
I got a question for you on this. Would this be like if there was one person that was in charge of setting up the room or something for like the Rotary meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be continual, so that, that's gonna save the organization money for the retina facility?
Correct. So the, normally if you're renting a facility, if it's not during city hours, then you have to pay for a facility attendant to be there. They go through a training, get certification in order to have that service provided at no cost, because they've gone through that training portion.
But it's gonna be something that's more ongoing, that somebody's kind of a wedding and they're gonna have somebody volunteer to-
Right. No, it's, it's specific for our local organizations that utilize our facilities on a continual basis.
Perfect.
All right, we're good? All right, we're on to Section 5 Transit.
It's the Adam Matamoto Night.
Transit goal.
I have a question about this section in general. There's also a transportation-
Yeah.
Three different sections, and this is a required section that-
It, it's not a required section. It, it's a, but it is an arm of circulation and-
Why is it here instead of there?
I think it was following, what was the 1996 general plan in that format? I don't know if there was really discussion to sep, to combine-
Because to me, it makes more sense to have it with the other sort of circulation and transportation sections of the plan, because that's what it's addressing. Another way of getting around town and how you use the streets.
That makes sense.
Not suggesting changes to it, but just moving it wholesale.
We could explore, you know, moving it so it fits next to-
Next to, because it just makes more sense to me that it would be next to that, whatever that section is called, the trend, trend.
The circulation.
Circulation. Does that make sense to you?
Good.
Follow that.
Okay.
Do you want to go in, um, for moving it? Still review this? It's gonna stand alone, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I think we just review it, I'd not, you know. Yeah, but, because we, we talked about, in that other section, we talked about the RTD bus routes and stuff.
Metro.
And this is kind of a supplement to that, in a way.
Right, right.
Because the local roundabout thing is sort of a supplement to the, to the RTD bus thing. And so it's a little confusing to have them separate. Um, so if you at least put them next to each other.
As opposed to subordinating it to cultural activities?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Are you in agreement with the suggested goal for transit?
Do you want, um, his favorite term, exceptional, or? Are you okay with equality transport? It's not even high.
I'm not going there. It's a cost, it's a cost thing.
Quality transportation?
So this-
What is, what is the city's annual transit allocation? Not, what is it in numbers? What does it mean?
Oh. Our, the city provided transportation falls under mainly two categories. It's the roundabout transit service, which is a fixed route, and our dollar ride service, which is a curb-to-curb service. And that, that constitutes the, the public transit that the city provides. Uh, we did list in this section the supplemental transportation services, such as MTA and the Gold Line rail station, access to rail services as well, as a supplementing what the city provides, in terms of transit, public transit.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the goal. The goal, maintaining a program, you're going to go back to his except, my exceptional, high, whatever. Maintaining a program that does not exceed the city's annual transit allocation. Is that a discretionary item? Is that, is that a ma, is that a mandated item? Where, where is this thing coming from?
It comes from Prop, Prop A funding, um, that provides our transportation services. Though, that, those Prop A funds specifically fund the trans, public transit, um, within the city. So they are allocated specifically for that. They can't be utilized for other, other services or programs.
This is state money that every city gets?
Correct.
Sales tax.
Sales tax money based on some formula.
So by definition, we can't exceed it, right?
Correct.
So, then I would say we're into a, go ahead.
Well, there's other ways you can supplement transit, like we've done in the past. There's other-
The city could, the reason this goal is written this way-
Yeah.
Is we only allocate our Proposition A monies for transit. It is possible to use general fund monies, because you want more transit. So this goal is limiting it to just spending what we get from Prop A, is the best way to explain it. That's the way, why it's written this way. We could put general fund money in there too, and double the program.
So then I would say that there should be some descrip, I mean, so you spend it all on a bus stop and you're done, right? It, it says you didn't exceed your transit. So I would say that probably best utilizes the city's annual transit allocation or something. There should be some standard of quality referenced. You're basically saying live within your means, right?
Where you provide what, with the money you have, you provide what-
What you can, what you can't. Right, so you want to do the best job you can with the money that-
You could say a probe that does not exceed the city's annual, um, allocation for, um, transit program, something like that. Just to emphasize it's transit-related monies for transit pro, they're restricted funds, that can only be used for transit.
Right, so I would say something to the effect of maintaining a program that best utilizes and does not exceed the city's annual transit allocation.
That would be fun.
But underneath it, a policy that immediately follows that is explore other transit funding sources.
Right.
So, maybe we want to say, maintain a program that does not exceed the city's annual, you know, something that allows for us to get extra money if we can and improve the system. So this says, you can't get, make the system better, you can't use any other money. So.
Right.
Well, maybe that's a policy.
It seems like a silly policy. If you could get more money, and then you could have better transit for people. I think what, what, the issue is, we're not gonna use general fund money for transit, right? We're gonna use this allocation or other funds that we could get by a grant or something.
Right.
Obviously, it says explore other transit funding sources immediately after that, which would cause you to, and if you got someone, it would cause you to exceed it.
So you set the budget based on the annual transit allocation? Is that what, is that, right? Okay. So, let me try this on, tell me if this works. Maintaining a pro, maintaining a program that best utilizes but does not exceed the city's budget. I can wordsmith that a little better. Policy one. Absent availability of other transit funding sources, don't go beyond the annual transit allocation, something like that.
What, I, I-
I'll move it to a policy.
Well, I'm just trying to figure, I understand, because you have a good point.
I would say, um, utilize, number one, utilize-
Annual transit allocation.
Uh, annual transit allocation.
Do not exceed.
Explore other transit funding sources to enhance-
Great.
The program.
Right. So we're breaking out the annual transit allocation as a policy from the, from the objective?
Maybe it's maintaining a program that- Well, I mean, we could say, maintain a program that does not use city general funds. That, is that good? Does that make sense? Is that what you're getting at here?
With the objective?
You could say that, it's turning it around the other way.
Okay, and then number one would be, um, utilize annual transit allocation. Number two would be explore other transit funding source. You could improve it. If there were money that you could get your hands on, that is not city general fund.
So I would say maintaining a program that does not utilize general, the general fund-
City's general.
City's general fund.
So maintaining a transit program that does not, that's not utilize the city's general.
And best utilizes available budgeted resources. Speaks to the quality issue. No?
It's running on-
Okay. Well, I should be some, there should be some-
How about maintaining a quality program that does not utilize city general funds for transit?
Excellent.
Maintain a quality transit program that does not utilize city's general funds.
That's it, that's, that's-
That's it.
That's the one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, when you get to 26.4, it says continue to provide the free fixed route services for the community.
We'll get there. All right, so we got that as the, as the objective, and then two policies.
And I think that, yeah, explore other funding sources. I mean, actually, we could just say utilize city's annual transit allocation and explore other transit funding sources as number one.
Did we get that? So we make one.
Did you get that one? So, so Policy C26.1 is combined, utilize annual-
City's annual transit allocation and explore other transit funding sources. Right, so then we got to, we know.
Excellent. Much better.
26.4?
As budgeted, yeah.
Budget is up there already, so.
You okay with that?
Yeah, it's fine. As long as we get the money.
To extend-
An allocation, I don't know, that's not general fund stuff, right?
We got that. All right. Maintain, maintenance of a linkage to regional rail. You got 28.1?
Good idea, because see them going away.
Yeah. Yeah, 30, 31. So. What, linking?
Yeah, well, with, uh, MTA, LA County MTA.
Well, that's, that's not gonna go away.
It's what we got, it's what we got.
That's not gonna change.
Did you have an alternative in mind?
Well, that's not gonna change.
Joe's taxi service.
Uber.
Uber, yeah.
I remember when it was the RTD, so.
Oh, yeah.
I do too, actually.
And before that, the MTA.
All right, are we good there?
Yeah.
Okay, 30, 31? We got, we got something on Objective C30 here.
Say C30?
30.4?
30.4. Explore additional handicap parking availability for the Hart Park House in downtown Business District.
Where is the handicap parking for the Hart?
I just realized, yeah, the reason why we have this-
Probably in the-
Is it doesn't belong-
It'd be a long route.
Oh. Under this objective.
On traffic safety.
Traffic safety.
So, parking actually in the, isn't, yeah, that's circulation. It belongs in circulation, parking, right? It doesn't belong here at all.
We also have it, I wrote here C2.4 is a possible-
2.4, oh boy.
And that's way, I don't see where is that.
It's, it's at the beginning.
Oh, I, I, it's under the Hart Park House issue, right?
Well, but that's-
I think this, this belongs in the parking section.
The parking section.
It belong in this section at all.
Right. We can find a spot for it.
I don't understand why traffics, this whole traffic safety, why is that in this section? And not in the traffic and circulation section?
For transit.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, this section does not belong under transit.
It, it doesn't at all.
Doesn't go here.
Well, didn't we have, not law enforcement, but there was a section related to-
Transportation, traffic.
Well, traffic.
Traffic, that goes in that section.
Did you say C2.4, Danny?
Yeah, that, I'm-
It's not 2, I just looked there.
So when you move, I know, it's not that, so, scratch that.
It's the one you removed.
I think C30 both do not belong in this section.
Well, look at 31 is an enforcement policy, right?
Yeah, no, it's not C2.4. It, it, well, let me just say, C30.4 just clearly doesn't belong under this Objective C30.
Yeah, that's one issue.
And then the other issue is, Objective C30 and the policies underneath them belong, which I think should be under parking or somewhere within the circulation chapter.
And C29, the same thing.
Maximum you-
Because we already had a parking section, didn't we?
Yeah.
Right.
These both don't belong in this section at all.
Okay.
So we'll get into that and yes.
Well, we'll look at, we'll give you the revised.
Where it fits, but I kind of think we've seen this stuff once already, about parking.
Yeah.
Very long ago.
When, when we get to the end where we have our schedule-
Yeah.
We'll tell you where we'll come back with-
Right, yeah.
Okay.
These fixes.
Put the stuff-
We're good?
We're good.
31, we're good. All right, 32, Section 6, Public Services.
We're in the home stretch, guys.
This is very informative, actually, too. All right, anything?
You're in the home stretch.
32?
I'm just, I just have a ques, this is another question about this. We already looked at a whole thing about water before, didn't we?
And sewer.
You did, I think, under your Resources section?
Mm-hmm.
Is this different?
I think it is different.
How is it different? I mean, I just, I'm asking a leading question here, but I just wonder how these two sections fit together. Are they each required sections that we have to have? Is it one of those things?
Well, this goes a little further down into power telco, all those other things, which-
It would be kind of, it, to me, it would make more sense to have this go kind of after the water section, you know? Because it follows-
Well, what was the other section that we reviewed? Because it was, it had, it was water and sewer.
We read all about, all these water-
Bruce.
Water things once before.
Maybe Bruce knows.
We have a, um, hold on. There's Resource Management. And then there is, this is Chapter 4, Community Services. So, the, under Community Services, what our current water facility services are. And then Resource Management was a separate, um, on water resources.
Is more about collecting water and this is more about delivering water? Is that how it gets divided up?
Yeah, the previous discussion was more about the resource itself. This is more about the service of bringing that to-
Water to-
The customer. So they are distinctly- Yeah.
It's like collecting the water and giving it away.
This goes into some other areas too, like solid waste removal, storm drainage, and some of those things. All right, 32? Nothing? All right.
This is the one where we're adding one in, or 30.
Yeah, page 33, there's an insert of a paragraph, um, and it would be inserted directly after the, um, water delivery system paragraph. It replaces it, I'm sorry. So-
I just read that going, okay, after that's gonna replace.
Yeah, it replaces it.
Water's, what's the major difference? The last sentence.
Couple of sentences at the end, yeah. Full gravity?
Yeah.
Good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Sounds like we're, we're okay.
You're all-
Yeah. All right? 34? Hydration sewer system. Good? Okay, page 35, solid waste.
We get an updated sewer management plan this year? See, it says that here it's supposed to be redone by 2014.
Updated sewer master plan? Research James, does it?
I'm, oh, excuse me, watch for that chair.
Do you want to read the question?
This is in here, the state required, uh, resource control, blah, blah, blah. Uh, sewer system management plan. 2006, and an update is expected to be complete 2014. Is that gonna happen this year?
That's gonna happen this year. It's in progress right now.
That's gonna happen this year, it's in progress right now.
Okay, so we're, but we're like July, right, so it's gonna happen before the end of the year?
Yes, it is.
This is first I've heard about it, so my question.
They have a comment on thirty six?
Thirty six?
You have a comment.
You have this highlight, yeah.
Am I required to recuse myself from any comments about power because my husband works for Southern California Edison?
Yes.
Doesn't bother me.
Gina, please, Gina, please.
We'll get through it faster.
If you could, could you step outside?
Depends on what the comment is.
I'm not making any comments, I'm not, I don't think I need to comment on that.
It's just a, under public services goal, it says adequate and safe public infrastructure utility systems that, utility systems that support land uses and then, semicolon, upgrading existing deficient systems and expanding where necessary to serve new development. That's fine, but we suggest removing it because it's already covered in objective C thirty one. C thirty one, um, has very similar language, so, um, so what we believe is objective is fine because it accomplishes that goal.
And that's your comment on C thirty one?
Y- yes. But you have a, the, the comment on C thirty one is fine.
Okay, but you've got to highlight it as well.
I, I think it was just to.
To link it.
To link it to.
Got it.
Okay, so, under public service goal, strike the highlighted part.
Strike the highlighted part because it's, it's here in objective.
And leave the rest, okay, makes sense. Why, why, I just, for Ken's edification, is adequate, I mean, should it be exceptional?
I would be very happy to have an adequate water system on my street where the water main breaks every two weeks, okay? Adequate would be a great improvement over.
We're an exception, we're asking for something.
Yeah.
We've also, although we didn't highlight it, um, C thirty one point four, it, it talks about provide adequate illumination of all streets, alleys, public areas. I, I would, I would say public areas, comma, consistent with dark sky principles because it is a, it is a, um, another objective and a set of policies and goals for that. Upgrade, not upgrading, upgrade areas that are deficient and maintain lighting fixtures in good working condition.
You want to add the part about the dark sky?
Yeah, so it'd be public areas, comma, consistent with dark sky principles. Comma, upgrade areas that are deficient and maintain lighting fixtures in good working condition. So with that change in the language, we also think that C thirty one point four doesn't belong under this objective and it should go to the dark sky section.
Good idea.
Okay.
Already had something like that in there.
Yeah, because it has nothing to do with C thirty one, well, yeah, it doesn't really.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, but the.
Not part of public services, it's part of.
But the second part does, the part about upgrade.
Oh, keeping good.
Deficient and maintaining light fixtures in good working condition, I mean, that's part of providing an adequate.
Electrical.
Electrical system, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you almost want to, where the semicolon is, that's like one, that could be the part, the dark sky, and then you have a new sentence which basically becomes thirty one point four.
Also, end it at consistent with dark sky principles?
Yeah, that move, that all moves to wherever, where the dark sky stuff is, right?
I see.
But then, the whole part about.
Upgrade areas.
Upgrade areas which are deficient and maintain lighting fixtures in good working condition, I think that's part of the system.
Comment on Paula, thirty two point one.
Oh, let me do it, can I have it?
No, no, she got it.
Did you get videotape?
I did get videotape, yeah.
We're gonna explore it, it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's?
This is.
The city shall explore videotape.
Explore videotaping and replay of all meetings for convenience and provide subscribers an alternate time, and this is all, you know, we already do it on, online. Records and makes available online.
Yeah, I would just change, continue to cable ca, in webcast.
Yeah, it doesn't say webcast, alright.
So continue to cable cast and webcast, all city meetings, blah, blah, blah.
I would just change videotape.
In addition, the city shall maintain a digital video archive.
Oh. I was just gonna change, I was, I was just gonna say the city shall, shall continue to record and replay meetings for convenience of subscribers. I mean, you can see it on the, online.
That's what I was, yeah.
Yeah, and I have to say is the city shall continue to make available.
Don't they want to keep a record of that, though? I, I realize it could be digital rather than video, but.
Well, that is.
But all we want, all we want here is that it's not videotapes, it's available, it's web, it's available.
Digital video.
Because it could be new technology.
Digital video or a compass.
There's no videotapes.
Yeah, make it available.
Okay.
In addition, the city shall, what did you say?
I just, I just, I, nothing else, that's fine, just make it available online, as always. Got videotaping and make them.
Right, shall we maintain an archive?
You're gonna make me come with, okay.
The first thing is continue to cable cast and webcast.
Continue to cable cast, all meetings, blah, 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 blah. Cable cast, oh, yeah.
And webcast?
The broadcast on cable and webcast, okay, whatever, live interrupted, blah, blah, blah. I think you can just take out the city shall explore videotaping and replay of meetings for convenience and provide subscribers an alternate time which watch. And instead say, the city will make available recordings of these meetings online. Which they are doing, it's already happening, continue to make available, whatever. Much better than having to take videotape.
So you're not comfortable saying the city shall maintain a recorded archive?
I don't.
We do do that now.
I don't think.
Okay. Uh, as long as we don't have to maintain videotape here. And then in the last section thirty eight, uh, thirty two to, uh, develop, maintain, excuse me, develop, implement, maintain disaster plan, provide emergency information on government, access television and local public radio in the event of a disaster, since we already do that as well.
Okay.
Maintain a disaster plan that.
That provides?
Yeah, that's fine.
That provides for, I don't know. Worded very strangely, this.
I think this is grammatical.
Public radio as well as the government access television, since we already have the investment.
Maintain disaster plans.
Okay, I think you are done, but I, I wanted to just point you to the planning commission review schedule, it's after, it's at the la, the last, very last sheet.
Oh, there it is.
And, um, I want to just point, you know, point to where we are, we've completed, you can see here down at the bottom of the page that we are, um, we've actually completed all sections of the plan, but it doesn't mean we're done yet because.
Well, I'm looking at all our changes.
They were, and we will show you, there were pending items that you had asked to, to come back, we flagged numerous items, uh, especially in the land use element, that will come back to you, um, that you didn't resolve, that you thought needed further discussion, so we'll make a list of those, we'll, we'll, we'll bring them to you and you can decide if you want to hammer them out at the next meeting. There's also the land use map, uh, we looked at the actual map physically, there was question about what the intent and the justification for, for proposing to change land uses. So we'll, we'll do that as well. And we'll try to bring as much to you on, on the next meeting in, um, in August. And then, um, in September, we will, we will bring you the entire draft general plan, um, as amended and the, um, we hope to give you an implementation plan, that is a lot of work. But it, it, it comprises of, of, of like a matrix that shows how the, how the policies that we've created tie to the actual actions that we will take and it'll be time, you know, coordinated with timeframes, and then who, who will do it, you know, responsible for it, it's, it's a lot. Along with an appendix and glossary that, that accompanies this, um, general plan.
So you think we'll get that by September?
We, we really hope to do that. And then, you know, we kind of put implementation in two me, two meetings, um, both September and October for implementation, finalizing those.
But does that get it to the council? I thought we were trying to get this thing done by the end of the year, does that get it to the council in time to get it done by the end of the year?
Probably not, before the end of the year, and I, I tell you because also the, um, the build out numbers was also tabled till after the council reviewed, began reviewing, especially the land use element.
Right, but we had talked about having this done at the end of the year and now we're halfway through the year and there's a whole bunch of other stuff, obviously, that's sitting behind this, I mean, how do we accelerate this? So we can get it in front of the council, I mean, this is just going on really a long time, is there a way to accelerate this?
We're trying to get it to you, I mean, the thing is, is unless you want to have more meetings, we, you know, in the, in the month, at this point.
Is the regular planning commission calendar that packed between now and?
We have at least two items, um, each meeting, you're here from seven to nine thirty, ten o'clock, the difficulty of, we can, we can schedule these general plan discussions, but often, you know, you have people waiting in the audience who are here for a particular item or again.
Well, we have, I mean, we've been on schedule, I just, I'm just, it makes me nervous, you tell me we're not gonna be through it till October and so then the council gets it, how many month, I mean, it's just, it's just going on, I mean, is there, there's gotta be a way to.
What's the, the better question is, what, looking at this date, how much further out are we, let's say we, by the, it says here October second. Let's say we get it wrapped up, is it several months beyond that to get it to you?
Well, beyond this, then, um, we may be able to take elements to the city council, depends on if they wish to agendize it. Perhaps look at the land use element, which is the larger one.
Don't we have a deadline that we actually have to hit on this thing, though? I mean, this is there, there's no deadline, this could go on forever.
Have an existing one, so.
Yeah, you know, the, the consultant who was hired to do the EIR, the technical EIR, they, um, they have sections drafted, but again, they can't complete it without.
Does want to get this done?
Build out numbers.
Convincing nod.
I mean, we really are, I, I have to say, we've, we've gotten a, a lot of progress and with these meetings, it's helped tremendously, but this is a big general plan update, it's, it's a lot of material to cover. And, and yet, there are issues still, I mean, we still have to go back and, and look at some of these policies that haven't been fully vetted out.
A lot of the land use stuff, which is, to me, totally the heart of the entire document, is stuff that we really need to look at, and I just think, it's just time consuming, it's just.
Yeah, but you know, it's, it's like a, it's, it's like a great novel, you don't want to write three, two thirds of it and then rush the last third. We, we, we need to take as much time as it's gonna take.
It just takes time.
Sorry, Ken.
We have a city council person who wants to speak.
Good evening, commissioners, I just wanted to first introduce myself formally and address, uh, the commission, my name's Rochelle Arzmenji and I am the city council member liaison alternate, so, um, thank you for having me today. And yes, I, I just wanted to comment, um, I, I know there is just a lot of anxiousness to get to the general plan, I know that there are a lot of, different segments that we need to get through before it gets to the city council, but I would like us to explore some options to see how we can either one, expedite it, to look at different portions of it and phasing it in, um, I obviously haven't spoke to the rest of the council about it, but I can imagine that, um, there will be some need to move this forward as fast as possible, it has come up in our city council meetings, as all of you know, I think, and, um, other ways that we can explore looking at moving this forward expeditiously, I think would be appreciated.
I mean, it seems like, is there another tactic, if land use is like the, the piece that's kind of the outlier, you know, as far as, but the rest of it is pretty straightforward, is that, can that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak for others, if we had to have an extra meeting to sort of bite into that and, and, you know, I just, I, we've been working on this a long time, I'd just like to, I hate to see it go all the way through next year, too, so.
But it sounds like there's some issues that are outstanding that are not, not our.
Yeah, I understand, we have to wait for you.
Regardless of whether we have.
And, and that can be a policy from, from the council, for example, if, if they want to phase in other elements that, that you, other elements other than the ones that you still need to review.
So we can sort of pass sections on to them and say, this is ready to go.
You could pass sections that, that you feel are at a level.
This part is good, send it on.
Right.
We don't have to send it all on as a block.
See, that makes sense.
Do you want to set some discussion perhaps the next meeting and determine which ones that you feel that are ready to go to the council and.
I think that would be a step forward.
We're happy to, if you're, if you're fine with staff, we've made the changes to those other sections, we can.
Because if we, because I think, it makes sense to me that if we're good with a section, why not send it on to the city council?
I think so.
Then we'll, we'll, we'll provide an outline and, and.
Blah along on the rest of them and they can, we can be working on it at the same time.
I mean, even like what we reviewed today, like.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're, we're gonna see a, a, the final.
Yeah, you will.
Okay.
But understand, if, if you forward them to the council and they decide they want to look at it.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Well, but that.
I mean, like today's section is, it's really, some of the other sections were really good and there's not a lot of changes to them.
I don't know, it seems like that would be a positive step to.
But I wanted to make sure you saw this schedule because it did, you know, when we created the schedule originally, we knew it could be fluid.
Yeah.
You know, to be realistic, we, we knew that we had to, um, adjust it, so I wanted to make sure you saw it.
Well, I think what you're saying is we, we did our part and we hit the schedule and.
Okay.
Alright. There we go. Alright, we are done with the discussion, draft general plan update review, so oral communication. Uh, audience, this is an additional opportunity for any person to address the planning commission on any item that's not on the agenda, as always, uh, address the planning commission by providing your name and address, keep comments in no more than four minutes, ensure an orderly, timely meeting. Looking up, I see no takers, so we'll close, audience, oral communication, audience comments, um, and bring it back to the planning commission, anyone here?
I have something I would like to bring up to the commission, which is, we've been seeing a lot of really large houses, um, to us recently. And the, the, the number for this to be reviewed is four thousand square feet. I think we should look into changing the city code, recommending change in city code that would lower that number. Because a lot of these houses really don't fit in the neighborhood because they're so big, and I think we should be reviewing it at a number that's lower than four thousand feet.
I, I've had a similar thought in my head and I was wondering where, first, where that threshold came from, how it was established?
You know, the, it existed when I came here, I'd have to look whether there's any history precedent as to four thousand, I don't know, Gina, if you remember, why that number?
It was, it was here when I came, and I just think, we're seeing so many buildings come to us that really are, are out of proportion to the area they're being built, and I think that, that number is, it, it's no longer adequate to our needs. And I think we should take a look at it.
The thing is, they could, they could be way out of proportion to the three ninety nine.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm thinking, you know, what if it were three thousand, what if it were thirty five, what if it's thirty five, you know?
Would you like me to just, I, we can agendize it for a discussion at a, at another meeting, if you'd like.
Do you mean, you know, bring, give us that part of the code and tell us how that works if we want to recommend a change of that?
I was gonna talk on, as part of that, maybe some history on, on where that number came from.
Okay.
If there is any, you know, because.
Someone can give me that history.
Because, you know, it's, we got that, we had that letter from, um, one, three thousand eight hundred. But how, what, is not a large house, and I was thinking, well, and who's, you know, universe is that, not a large house.
It, it depends on the lot size, you know, it's a lot of.
But also, you know, if you compare it to all the, you know, you, look at, everybody I know who lives in Sierra Madre doesn't have a house of that size, maybe I just don't associate with the right people, but.
But there are some lots where it's more than appropriate. But there are some lots where it's more than appropriate.
And there's some lots where it's totally not appropriate compared to...
Supposed to fit in, it's supposed to fit in the... You know, it's not agendized this evening, so...
Yeah, so let's, let's, that's a great idea.
Okay.
I would like to bring that up at a future meeting.
That'd be a fun discussion.
But I mean, when I'm here, not while I'm gone, so...
I wish there was also something that would, we'd get bigger backyards, we're seeing so many of these little, small backyards that just aren't, don't seem appropriate.
Because the setback is fifteen feet.
Yeah, yeah, the buildable area or the area for a yard is so small. Doesn't seem, I don't know.
Okay.
So I have a, a comment and a question. The story poles at Stonegate have now been up for over a year, I'm guessing, since we first looked at that. And I do live in the vicinity of that and they are falling down and there is debris and it's getting to be kind of an eyesore. So is it appropriate that we ask the developer to knock those down and clean up those lots until decisions are made on developing them, because it's just...
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's just pretty horrible over there now.
We can, I do wanna mention that, I recall some discussion, and I'm not sure if it came from the public or from the commission, and maybe you could help me, but when, when those story poles went up and that was to help assist visually, there was some discussion in that they, they weren't helpful, they were in fact, were not, they were not a good measure and that the, the visual diagrams and the perspectives were a better, better aid. And as the three Stonegate projects come to you, would you like, because it is a, it is an, it is an item in our HMZ that by discretion, we can ask the applicant to put, put them up, so what it would...
Oh, it was very helpful to me during the evaluation process, we, I mean, I got a very clear idea of the mass of the properties. It's just, it's now debris, it's been sitting there being weathered and it, it looks pretty awful and people do walk through the neighborhood and such.
Would you like to see it for the revised designs that come before, should they come back with revised designs, do you wanna see that this being removed and new story poles coming in?
Yes.
Are you asking it as a question or is that an agendized item? I, I don't...
He's asking a question.
I'm asking a question because I...
It was very helpful to me and I would like to see them again when there are designs that look like they're credible. I don't think there are designs that are credible. But right now, I just like the neighborhood to be cleaned up.
Credible, they're gonna, they're gonna come back with a revised design.
Fine.
So they're gonna, like to, you know...
But I think, I mean, if...
What I'm saying is, if they're gonna bring back a design that doesn't address any of the concerns that we've already raised, then I don't know why we need to put story poles up again. If they bring back a design that speaks to the issues that we've raised, then we can put up story poles again.
I won't know that type of...
Every time they revise the design, story poles need to be revised.
You need to revise the story.
I really think that they, if they listen to our suggestion, those story poles will probably be twelve feet shorter anyway, right?
Well, but...
Because they putting one story on their ground, right?
Well, we'll see, but I mean, as the standard practice, I mean, if you're coming with the revised design, the expectation would be you would need a story pole at...
We'll do that.
In any event, right now, I'd just like it to be cleaned up since they own the land and it's just kind of debris over there, so if that's possible, that would be...
July seventeenth, your next meeting, they have a revised design for, for one of the homes. What we need to do is tell them to put story poles as soon as possible.
And tidy up what's there and falling apart.
And then the other two lots, they can take them down and...
Okay. Thank you, that's good direction.
I mean, they might be able to reuse, reuse the material to re...
And then my only question is, do you have any update on our next commissioner who might be proposed to be joining us?
I, I'm not sure, but I think this has been asked to be agendized, I think for the, the next, the second July meeting of the council.
For city council?
For city council?
No?
No.
I'm sorry, I got that wrong.
Actually, it's a consent calendar item for this very next meeting, a week from tonight.
And you have candidates?
There's one, the council is just going to appoint the one candidate, is considering appointing the one candidate who has applied.
There isn't a mandate that there's more than one candidate for them to choose?
There's a resolution, but the resolution states that the council can
At their discretion.
Can do whatever they want to put it, it's late, to put it bluntly.
We might have another council member, another planning commission member shortly.
Yes.
Alright, development services?
I just wanted to remind you that, and to remind the public, that tomorrow's regularly scheduled planning commission is canceled, this took its place. And your next meeting...
It comes with a beer cage, which appears only once now in the general plan.
Which we hope that Commissioner Pevsner is not gonna come tomorrow. And then on, your next regularly scheduled meeting is July seventeenth. Okay, alright.
Thank you, Dandy. Well, that concludes, I guess we can adjourn our meeting?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.